Did you go anywhere?
Uh, could you please do, do, do we need to roll call? I think we do. Go ahead, Anthony.
Sir, Councilmember Weest.
Uh, I.
Widmer.
Yes, still here.
Lemprous.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
I'm here.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have two presentations. Uh, Chief, are you doing the presentation on Quincy? I don't think I have seen that. You must be doing that.
It's in the pack.
I have it. I see it. Uh, okay, I will read this presentation. Uh, this is, this is a proclamation in recognition of an outstanding Atherton Police K-9. Chauncey, uh, Chauncey has actively served and protected the town of Atherton for six years and is now almost eight years old. Whereas Chauncey began her work in April 2014 after completing 160 hours of K-9 certified training. Chauncey has been a great asset in assisting officers in their daily duties, which require a strong set of physical and mental strength. Additionally, Chauncey underwent 80 hours of training that enhanced tracking skills for missing people and criminals. Chauncey has also been trained at SKIDDS, a rigorous course that teaches K-9's effective approaches, stealth and tactics, safer criminal arrest techniques, along with synchronized team movement during live gunfire. Chauncey has actively interacted with the community, made visits to schools, along with attending events to maintain other skillsets that help those around her. And whereas Chauncey and K-9 handler Officer Crystal Pronsky routinely worked closely with each other, allowing them to create a strong partnership that has proven to be a valuable asset to the Department of neighboring agencies. The effective dynamic between them has led to multiple cases where non-bite apprehensions occurred and arrest for assault with a weapon and aided in countless incidents that occurred in the communities nearby. And whereas through Chauncey's mission, though Chauncey's mission is to protect the Atherton community, her duty was to ensure that both her and Officer Pronsky finished their shifts together. Chauncey will continue to be an integral part of Atherton's Police Department history, further proving, further proving of K-9 units are an important asset to law enforcement and law enforcement agencies and to the Atherton Police Force in particular. Now, therefore, as Mayor of the Town of Atherton, on behalf of the entire Atherton City Council, I do hereby commend the outstanding community services performed by Chauncey during her K-9 career and Officer Pronsky and wish her the best in her retirement.
Beach.
Where's Chauncey? I want to see her.
You, you have him right there. There should be a black dog that you can see. It's named Crystal Pronsky who's with him to receive the proclamation.
Okay, wait a minute. Let me go find him. They got it.
We have to sort of.
I thought the dog was behind Rick. If you, Rick, you move a little bit, there's a, there's a dog back.
That, that, that's, that's a different dog. That's a black lab.
There he is. There he is.
Wait, wait. I don't see her.
No, he, he's right there. He's also black.
He's out of tension.
Yeah, he is. He's got big ears.
I, I don't see him. He needs to bark. So he put his, put his microphone on.
Right there. Right there.
There he is.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you, Crystal. What a great job.
And we also have Norma Fogelberg, our wonderful ADAP.
Great.
Ed.
Okay, um, I am honored to provide a proclamation in recognition of Norma Fogelberg of the Atherton Disaster Preparedness Team. Norma has done an outstanding job with the DAP. Whereas the town would like to take this opportunity to thank ADAP member Norma Fogelberg for her years of service. And whereas ADAP's sole mission in partnership with the Atherton Police Department is to train and organize Atherton residents to be resilient, response capable, and recovery able in the event of a townwide emergency or a disaster event. And whereas Norma played an integral role in the general organization of leadership and strategy and coordinated website and marketing development, she worked diligently in the recruitment of neighborhood coordinators and block captains and was one of the main liaisons with Atherton staff. And whereas the town has been fortunate to have members like Norma Fogelberg as the go-to resource for disaster and major emergency training and preparation. And whereas the town will be forever grateful for the education, communication and aid given to Atherton residents, along with the Twitter handle, uh, @AthertonPreparedness. And now, therefore, as Mayor of the Town of Atherton, on behalf of the entire Atherton City Council, I hereby commend the outstanding community service of Norma Fogelberg and wish her the best in her new chapter outside of Atherton. Thank you, Norma.
Good job, Norma. Thank you very much for all your help.
I said, I'll applaud her. Nice going, Norma. We're gonna miss you.
Well, I'm gonna miss you all. And, and would it be possible to say a few words?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I'm really touched. I, this is the first time I've ever gotten a proclamation and I am thrilled. Thank you. I, I wanted to thank two people in particular, um, Tom Bruceing and, um, the Chief, Chief Steve McCully, for really waking me up to the necessity about preparing, preparing for disasters and preparing for emergencies. I never had any idea that this would be in my lexicon until I walked into my first ADAP meeting in the town council and there were maybe 10 people. And now our meetings are 70 people. And Tom's leadership partnered with the Chief's leadership has, has made this happen. So whether you believe in the effects of climate change or just the devastating weather that has become a national discussion, I want to encourage everyone, whether it's personally, for your family, uh, for your neighbors, or for our community, because I will always be an Athertonian. It's vital to our safety to prepare. And I wanted to let you know that Earl and I have moved from the wonderful enclave of Atherton to the heart of what we are calling Fire Country, otherwise known as Wine Country. And we've already had to evacuate once. And all that training, my CERT training, my ADAP training, uh, the Citizens Academy that Chief McCully offered that many of us took and working with the Chief has helped me make this decision more comfortable for us. Because why, in your right mind, would you move from Atherton to the Fire and Wine Country, right? So. Yeah. It was just the next thing for us. And I might say the wine was a good reason. And I want to also thank the council, Mayor DeGolia. Your support and participation was critical. And you always came through. And Elizabeth, you were the same. Anthony, you always showed up for us. And I appreciate that. You trained me on the, on the Zoom for the town and Francesca, who may not be on, who was our contact for so many Athertonians. And it wouldn't be appropriate if I didn't share this with my board colleagues, Colleen Haight, Jeannie Johnson, Rebecca Grant, and Tom, who are still working really hard and who still need you to keep this message out there and alive. Because as you know, with all the fires, you guys experienced your own issues down there as well. Um, and I don't know, I think there might be one or two area coordinators on. I thank you for trusting me when I strong-armed you, like John, who I see, asking you to be an area coordinator and then asking you to my house every month for meetings. I appreciated the fact that you trusted me and that you guys grew the whole program for your neighborhoods on your own. You're all amazing. And, and I already miss you because in my new community, I'm starting from scratch. So I'd love to just import all of you, but I can't do that. So, um, I want to say thank you for being great partners. Chief, I can't see your face on this call, but I know you're there. And I appreciate this proclamation. And I'd like to share with all of you, our partners, my partners, and with all the adapters that are on. So, thank you. And, um, I will be dropping in when you open up the new town building and the new police station. So you're not done with me yet. I just won't be there, egging you on for something new, like another request. So thank you, everyone. I really appreciate the honor.
Thank you, Norma.
Thank you, Norma. So, yeah, I, I mean, I want to second what Norma said, that really, in, in addition to recognizing the tremendous service that Norma has provided to the town and, and the coordination with the police and the way that ADAP has taken off under your leadership is so significant. But I also want to formally recognize and commend all of the ADAP board members and team members for their outstanding work over this year and the past years. ADAP was created to assist the Atherton Police Department and the residents of Atherton in dealing with disasters, including earthquakes, fires and pandemics. And you have really done it. ADAP has become such a significant organization under your leadership and Tom's. And, um, it, it, it's very impressive. So, uh, I, I just want to thank you and all of the ADAP volunteers for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for being such great partners and for taking it seriously. And keep that message out there.
Great.
Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is public comment. Uh, Anthony, do we have any public comment? I don't see any hands up, but you may have received public comment.
No, I don't have any general public comment. We do have some public comment for specific items. As you can see, if you're seeing my screen, I posted the public comment graphic. So if anybody would like to make a public comment, you can click Participants at the bottom of your screen and raise your hand. You can send a text message to the 650-687-7084. Or if you're calling in by phone, you can dial *9 and you will be able to raise your hand. And I'll also be checking email. Uh, we have none.
Okay, great. So, uh, we need to do a report out of closed session from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening. The council did meet in closed session today and they have provided direction to staff as a result. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have the written report as part of your agenda packet and department heads and other staff for here, if you have any questions specific to the report and their departmental reports.
Uh, Bill.
I just have a comment. Uh, my comment surrounds the, the reading numbers. And I, you know, I brought this up to George. And he said that perhaps Lisa might be able to give us some more insight. But when I look at the numbers and I see what Woodside gets, and they have open space, they're not as densely populated as we are. And our, our town is all built out. And then there is no real space to add anything or rezone things. Then we've got a situation where, you know, it just didn't seem right to me without any further explanation as to why our numbers would be higher than, say, Woodside. So perhaps we could get some insight into that.
Uh, would you like me to comment now or I can, um, prepare a presentation for a future meeting?
Well, if you got a short answer, I'd like to hear.
I think the, I think the short answer is really proximity to jobs. Um, so there's a number of factors. Um, A-BAG as well as the methodology committee is applying when they're determining the numbers for each. And one of those factors has to do with proximity to transit and proximity to jobs. Um, and so that's probably why Atherton number is a bit higher than some of the other communities. There's also some concern recently, um, because of all the wildfires with having, um, high job concentration in areas that have high severity for wildfire. So that might be another factor that gets applied. Uh, the methodology committee is finalizing their recommendation. And then that'll go to the full A-BAG board. We're hearing some chatter that the A-BAG board may or may not accept the recommendation from the methodology committee. And they may apply a different, um, RENA distribution factor. So we will be happy to continue to give you updates as this progresses.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments on the city manager's report? Okay, um, next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. These are items seven through 15. Does anyone wish to pull any item from the consent calendar? Elizabeth?
Elizabeth, yes. I'd like to pull item number nine for discussion, please.
Item number nine is adoption of a resolution designating voting delegates, a voting delegate and, and up to two alternates for the League of Cities Annual Conference. You want to pull that?
So, yes, that's the item. Um.
We'll, we'll pull it and then you can comment on it when we get to it.
Okay.
Uh, does anybody want to pull any other item from the consent calendar? Does anyone from the public wish to pull anything from this consent calendar?
I don't have any hands or any messages.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to approve items seven, eight, and 10 through 15 on the consent calendar?
I'll move. Okay, second.
Okay. Let me do a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Weest.
I.
Widmer.
Yes.
Lemprous.
I.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes. Okay, um, so the next, the next item is the public hearing and then we'll come to item nine. I think we need to do the public hearing first. Stephanie, are you managing that? Or is Lisa?
I am. I'm managing that.
Great.
Um, I do have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
We could, let's see.
I'm pulling that up now.
Great. Um, I'll go ahead and begin. So tonight, the council is being asked to introduce amendments to the Atherton Municipal Code specifically to two chapters, Chapter 17.52, related to accessory dwelling units or ADUs, as I'll refer to them, um, from this point forward, as well as some amendments to associated ADU definitions within the municipal code definition chapter. So getting into it, um, next slide, please. So just in a bit of background as to why we are here tonight. In fall of last year, the governor signed into law several bills related to ADUs, accessory dwelling units, uh, with the purpose to ease local restrictions, um, which I will be discussing momentarily statewide. Such laws became in effect throughout the state on January 1st of 2020. Uh, so what that means is that if a jurisdiction does not adopt their local ADU ordinance to comply with the state mandates, by matter of law, that jurisdiction's ADU ordinance becomes null and void. What that in turn means is that if an ADU application is applied for and a jurisdiction has yet to adopt their local ordinance to meet minimum compliance with the state regulations, that jurisdiction must approve such application under the state's, what are more permissible guidelines. So as such, staff has drafted an updated ADU ordinance, uh, which was presented to the Planning Commission last month, uh, to meet these minimum state requirements. The Planning Commission did vote, on a vote of three to one, to recommend that the council reject such amendments, uh, not on the basis of the proposed amendments that we will be discussing tonight, but more to express the position of the Planning Commission, um, in their disfavor for such state mandates. The next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the draft amended ADU ordinance before you tonight, uh, attempts to meet the minimum guidelines as prescribed by the state in order for the town to comply, while at the same time attempting to address our local conditions of identified staff concerns such as setbacks, floor area, inherited trees, to the greatest extent feasible. So the draft ordinance being considered, um, tonight does also reflect early consultation that we as staff had with both the state's housing and community development staff or HCD staff while we were drafting the ordinance, as well as consultation with our own town attorney's office. Next slide, please. So before I get into the changes, I'll just start with what hasn't changed from the town's existing ADU ordinance.
Can we ask a question on the previous chart?
Previous slide, please.
Yeah, please.
Yep.
So you, you mentioned here the replacement unit says, uh, any existing legal non-conforming building can be demolished and then rebuilt with the same non-conforming condition. So if somebody built something that either was public was permitted, because a lot of things sometimes get built that aren't permitted. So I assume it has to be permitted, uh, or it was built before we actually were doing permitting, that they could build them with, to the same exact standards. Is that right? Is that what this says?
That's correct.
So if somebody had an older building that actually right now, the fire marshal wouldn't approve, it was non-conforming, that they're allowed to then make another unsafe building? Is that what you're telling me?
No, the non-conformity would due, would be due to zoning development standards. So such things as setbacks or height. So for example, if there was a building that, say, is located three feet from a property line and is 18 feet tall, neither of those conditions would meet current zoning standards. However, if that building was permitted, it would be considered a legal non-conforming building. Under, yeah.
If it wasn't, if it wasn't permitted, because we weren't permitting those type of things at that time, there are some of those buildings around, then what?
Then its demolition would need to comply with the current standards. This provision only applies to legal non-conforming buildings. So legal, meaning those that have been constructed with permit.
Okay, all right. I've got a question on the next chart too, so.
Sure. Um, so I'll just quickly go through the three provisions of the ADU ordinance that did not change, meaning that the existing regulation is allowed to continue to be carried over to the proposed new ordinance. First of all, the location of an ADU. Uh, right now, the ordinance allows for an ADU to be either attached or detached from the main residence, but needs to be located on the same lot. Um, the second item that has not changed is the maximum size of an ADU, whether attached or detached, and that is 1,200 square feet. And then lastly, um, the front yard setback requirements for ADUs. Uh, um, for an attached unit, those ADUs need to meet the same setback as the main residence. And for a detached unit, it needs to be 120 feet from the front property line or 30 feet behind the front of the main building, whichever is less. So all of those items remain the same. Um, next slide, please. Okay, so moving into an overview of the ADU standards that would change as a result of the state regulations. So the first being the maximum number of units. Um, right now, every property that allows single-family uses within the town can have both a main residence and an ADU. Under the state regulations, every property now that can have a single-family home can have that main residence, an ADU, as well as what now is defined as a junior accessory dwelling unit or J-ADU. Uh, and what a J-ADU is, is an additional independent living unit that cannot exceed more than 500 square feet and is located inside the main residence. So inside the main building with its own kitchenette. So effectively, what that means is now a single-family zone property within Atherton can have a main house, an accessory dwelling unit, and a junior accessory dwelling unit. Um, the second change is, uh, what Councilmember Widmer was just inquiring about, which has to do with the replacement unit. Um, so I'll just summarize that again. Is that under state law, now any existing legal non-conforming building based on setbacks, height, square footage, or any other zoning development standard can be demolished and rebuilt to those same non-conforming development standards. Current regulation would have required that building, if was, if it was to be demolished, to be rebuilt to the current town development standards. Um, the next change that has come as a result of, uh, state law has to do with owner occupancy. So while state regulations do continue to require either the main residence, the ADU, or the J-ADU to be occupied by the legal property owner of record, it gives a grace period effectively to implementing that regulation. Um, specifically, if, for example, a new ADU is to be constructed tomorrow, that owner occupancy requirement requiring the property owner of record to live in one of those units does not need to happen until 2025. So there's a five-year grace period that the state has written in to require owner occupancy of one of the units on a property.
Okay, Stephanie, I have a question.
Yeah.
On the second point here, then this is a follow-on to what Councilmember Widmer previously addressed. If a existing legal non-conforming building were demolished and, uh, rebuilt, and let me use this fact pattern about what, I, I'm not dealing with the zoning issue, but, uh, in the last 20 years, many, uh, newly-built buildings now all require sprinklers. And, uh, if that, uh, unit, uh, did not, was legal when it was built, uh, is non-conforming specifically because it doesn't have sprinklers. And if, if it were to be built today, it would require sprinklers. Could it be built without sprinklers as an ADU?
Uh, my understanding to that question is no. So the non-conformity or ability to carry over what was in non-conformance is just for the zoning development standards. So the actual construction details of that building would need to meet current applicable uniform California Building Code requirements. And if sprinklers was one of those requirements based on the building, then sprinklers would need to be installed.
So Stephanie, this is Vice Mayor Lewis. I have a question on number three, a clarification.
Yes.
About the requirement of the property owner to occupy an ADU or J-ADU within a five-year period. What if the owner, here's my hypothetical. Uh, uh, an owner of a property is renting out the entire house right now, a residence to someone. And they want to build an ADU and maybe a J-ADU on the property. But they're not living in the property at all. So they would have five years. So what if they moved back to the main building and then rented out the ADU and J-ADU? It doesn't mean that they have to live in those ADU or J-ADU, right? They just have to live on the property.
Correct, but not, not technically until.
For five years.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. Okay. It was just a little confusing because it seemed like they were going to have to occupy the new constructed ADU or J-ADU.
If I could, Elizabeth, follow up on your question.
Yeah.
Stephanie, isn't the case that if if I were to rent a property, I could put an A D U, a J A D U, and the primary residence not live there and rent it out to three different families or individuals and for five years?
For five years.
Then in twenty twenty five, if I continued to not live in that residence, I could rent out only one, one unit, the residence, A D U, J A D U, whatever. It's one thing. Is that is that correct?
No, you could run out two because effectively there would be three living units on the property. There would be the main residence, there would be the A D U, and there would be the J A D U. And the requirement is that the property owner come twenty twenty five just needs to occupy one of those three units.
So if the property owner did not intend to occupy, if I if I owned a house somewhere else and I was living there, and this was now an investment property for me, in twenty twenty five, would I be able to rent it out to two different families, say, two different groups, or just one?
Two.
Two. Oh, okay.
Because you'd have to be living there. He doesn't want to come back and live there.
Well, then I believe it would be a issue of noncompliance with the original approval of the A D U or the J A D U.
So my, yeah, I would think that they would say, no, you know, you you just can't do that.
So the answer, I I think I think you got it, Elizabeth. I think you answered my question, which is if in five years I I want to live in, you know, some Palo Alto and rent my home in Atherton, and I did have an A D U and a J A D U, I would only be able to rent that home to one group, one family. Could not rent the three different units.
You could not rent the three different units because you would be technically required to occupy one of the three.
So you couldn't rent anything.
What they don't want you to do is to become a landlord, just, you know, like a multi-family landlord. Right?
Yeah, I I mean, I I the I believe the intent of this grace period, for lack of a better way to describe it, is to try to incentivize housing units to be built. With the caveat that in five years, property owner, you need to be aware that you need to occupy one of these. You know, how that's going to be enforced in five years, I would imagine would be would be challenging. If there is an instance where a property owner is not actually occupying from the get go.
I I don't think we prohibit people from renting their property. Go ahead, George.
The actual more concerning scenario, I think, is you get a junior A D U inside the house, A D U outside the house, and you have the main residence. You rent you rent the main residence, you rent the accessory A D U, and we'll never know if you're living inside that junior A D U or not as that owner occupied requirement.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, then can we please move to the next slide, Anthony? Okay, so the next change has to do with allowable building height for detached A D Us. Right now, the requirement would cap the height of a detached A D U to be no more than fifteen feet maximum. And that's in line with the town's existing accessory building and extra accessory building and structure ordinance. State law now allows detached A D Us to be constructed up to a maximum height of sixteen feet. However, I'll just note that the town's other associated height requirements, such as a maximum eleven-foot sidewall and a maximum nine-foot window height would continue to be applicable for a detached A D U. The next change has to do with onsite parking requirements associated with A D Us. So while the existing parking parking regulation of requiring one onsite either covered or uncovered parking space per A D U remains, additional scenarios exempting that requirement have now been added by the state. So right now, if an A D U is located within a quarter mile of transit or if it's part of an existing building, either the main house or, say, a detached guest house, no parking is required. So those same exemptions continue to apply under the new state laws, but they've added two additional criterias or scenarios for exemption. One of those additional criteria is that if the A D U is located within one block of a car-sharing vehicle location, no parking is required. So within the town, Menlo College did have zip cars on their property, so.
They don't anymore. They don't anymore.
Okay, so if they ever did again, and an A D U was constructed within one block of Menlo College, it would be exempt from providing one onsite parking space. And then the additional parking exemption scenario that the state has added is that if an A D U is located on a property where on-street parking permits are offered, it would not be required to provide that onsite parking space.
So where we were, Stephanie, where we are today, for the most part, most of our streets, there's not a parking requirement as far as getting a permit like there is in Menlo Park. But at the same time, you know, cars can't be left in the same spot on on the street, as I understand it from P D, for seventy-two straight hours, you know, then there's there's questions about that. So are we planning on offering parking permits now? Or or is this just not going to count here for the most part in Atherton?
No, there's no, no proposal to create any kind of parking permit program within the town. This is a state mandate, and frankly, at this point would be moot in the town of Atherton unless the town chose under a separate process program or approach to create some type of permitting parking system within the community.
And what what is the definition of public transit in item C?
That would in for Atherton be including Samtrans and the Caltrain station. Okay.
But that's Samtrans, regular stops that are, you know, you know, each stop is within so many minutes of each other. I mean, there are, there are places, for example, the schools have a bus that comes by and picks kids up regionally. This, the bus comes by in the morning and then drops them off in the afternoon. Those are the only times. So that's, that's public, that's public transit, but it's not regular public transit. So it has to be regular public transit like we looked at when we were talking about Mr. Reiner's requirements. Is that not correct?
Yes, for the S B thirty-two, right?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move on to the next change as a result of, oh, if we go back, sorry, just one quick quick piece on that slide remaining, and that has to do with the process timing requirement. So when an A D U application is submitted under current regulations, there is a hundred and twenty-day time limit that the application needs to be approved, and that time limit has been reduced down to sixty days under these new state laws. Okay, so we can move to the next slide now, Anthony, please. Thank you. So one of the more significant state mandated changes as it relates to A D Us is the ability now for an A D U, whether it's attached to the main residence or detached, to have only a four-foot side and rear setback. So right now, the minimum setbacks throughout towns for detached buildings, such as a guest house, poolhouse, et cetera. And in some instances, for main residences on very small lots, is ten feet from the side or rear property line. So that is what identified as a significant change related to Atherton's existing setback regulations for A D Us. Right now, under current standards, the town requires attached A D Us to be located and have the same setbacks as the main residence with the ability to encroach into those required setbacks up to twenty percent. For detached A D Us under the current regulations, they need to also meet those same setback requirements I just mentioned. So a detached unit also needs to meet the same setbacks as the main building, but allowed to encroach up to twenty percent. Initially, staff proposed alternative scenarios in our early consultations with the state H C D that I mentioned previously. We had to try and vet larger setbacks given Atherton's existing fabric, predominance of heritage trees, our larger lot configurations, and landscape screening requirements. But such scenarios were rejected by the state and confirmed also by our town attorney's office as noncompliant with the state requirements. So as an attempt to try and somehow address those concerns that I mentioned, staff net is proposing a means to try to encourage larger setbacks for new A D Us by proposing floor area exemptions as a means to try and incentivize those larger setbacks. And I will get into that on the next slide. But before we move on, another piece that I feel is worthwhile to share is as it relates to heritage trees. Within Atherton, given the town's landscape screening requirements, a lot of the larger trees run along the property boundary lines because they served as screening mechanisms when properties were originally built. We did express the concern to the state H C D of a four-foot setback potentially having the likelihood of encroaching into our local defined tree protection zones or buffer areas around existing heritage trees. And we have received the feedback from the state that our tree protection zone would supersede the allowable, or I should say potentially allowable, four-foot setback for side and rear property lines. So an example scenario would be if somebody came in and wanted to construct a detached A D U four feet from a side and rear property line, and there was an existing heritage oak tree in the corner of that lot, and the associated tree protection zone or buffer zone around that tree fell within that four-foot setback area, the A D U would need to be shifted out of that T P Z zone and would result in a greater setback.
Stephanie, I think you did really good work on that.
Thank you. So next slide, please. So the last change has to do with floor area exemption, and I'll explain a little bit more about the staff proposed amendment to try and encourage larger setbacks for A D Us. And so the existing, our existing A D U ordinance allows the floor area of an A D U, which again can be constructed up to twelve hundred square feet. It allows it to be exempt from counting towards the site's overall maximum allowable floor area. State law now allows every A D U by right, whether it's attached or detached, to have its first eight hundred square feet be exempt from the site's overall maximum allowable floor area. So in an attempt, again, to incentivize larger setbacks, staff is proposing language in the draft ordinance that would allow an A D U to gain that additional four hundred square feet of exempt floor area, assuming that an A D U is proposed at twelve hundred square feet. If that A D U detached meets or exceeds the minimum ten-foot side and rear setbacks that the town currently has regulated for detached accessory buildings and structures. That same allowable provision of additional floor area exemption is also proposed for A D Us attached to the main residence if they voluntarily choose to set their A D U to meet our, what are our current standards, which is meet the same setbacks as the main house, but be allowed to encroach twenty percent into that requirement. So if we could go to the next slide, please. Just a quick, very rough outline or site plan of what that could potentially look like. So the orange upside-down L being the main house, the blue square being an A D U, detached A D U. This scenario shows that if this A D U voluntarily chooses to situate itself, that blue box, a minimum of ten feet from the side and rear property line, still meet the minimum requirement for the front yard setback, which is a hundred and twenty feet from the front property line or thirty feet behind the main house, whichever is less, and be located outside of any associated tree protection zone. This particular development scheme would be allowed to exempt its total square footage of twelve hundred square feet from counting towards the property's overall floor area maximum. If they chose in this same site plan to push that blue square farther back into the corner and result in only a four-foot side and rear setback as allowed by the state, then in terms of floor area exemption, they would only be allowed to exempt eight hundred square feet of their twelve hundred square foot building. So that four hundred square foot difference would count towards the site's overall maximum allowable floor area.
Stephanie, I have a question.
Yes.
Would that be true whether they newly built it or just converted an existing accessory unit, maybe not yet, an A D U? Say that someone took a pool house and converted it into an A D U. It had ten-foot setbacks. As long as they retain those ten-foot setbacks, then they get twelve hundred additional square feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question as well?
Go ahead.
So so first off, you know, I I understand that, you know, we're trying to mitigate this, and I, you know, and that's kind of the purpose of what you're doing, telling us what the state has done and things like that. But all we're saying is that if you adhere to the normal setbacks, we'll get, let you use give you another four hundred square feet, and that seems to be about it. Correct me if I'm wrong. And then secondly, you know, there was an earlier question with regards to, you know, for you or for Mona. You know, how are we going to police this thing that somebody doesn't just buy property and set themselves up? And then have, you know, the the bigger house, you know, rented by a series of people, and then the larger A D U by another whole family, and then another junior one by another couple of groups, what, you know, and doing it for more than five years? How how are we going to verify that? Do they have to fill out a permit that says that they're, they're doing this and they're not going to live here or and that we would check on it or what? Have you thought through that?
If I can answer the first question first, yes, we did go through a series of potential alternatives to try to address the very significant change in setback requirements. And the floor area. And the floor area exemption incentive is effectively the only tool that we found. That we could still offer to try and. Meet that concern while still being able to comply with the minimum state requirements. Correct. To answer your second question, Mona, I would appreciate some feedback there. But in terms of how we could regulate that. Just. As we have done in the past, there is an approval certificate that is associated with any new ADU that has such requirement. Right now, the town hasn't been reporting any documents against properties for ADUs. Some jurisdictions do do that, so that could be a point that the town could consider. Mona, I don't know if you have anything else that you'd like to potentially add to address council member Whitmer's comment on enforcement and regulation. Five years down the line.
Yes, thank you, Stephanie. It is a potential issue much like any violations of the city's municipal code or zoning ordinance. Predominantly, it would be a complaint basis inquiry. So if someone were to make the complaint, then we could look into it, have code enforcement review it and go through the. Administrative hearing process at that point. We could also, we would also do the same thing for unpermitted accessory dwelling units, but that's really the extent of it. Again, as Stephanie mentioned, the purpose behind this legislation is to immediately or as quickly as possible. Provide more housing in California. So the legislature has not cared for or put too much thought into. Property owners who are not complying, the best that we can do is through our local regulations of code enforcement.
I have a quick question. If I could. Is, is there requirements within this if the, obviously it seems that there, it's the state again telling us what to do. And we're trying to manage it as best with our best capabilities of what we have. Is there a way to manage the required parking because that tends to be one of the biggest complaints related to ADUs in general? And any accessory dwelling and forcing them to have all parking onsite because the neighbors usually get upset even in Atherton. With larger parcels that they don't want to see if there are more people on a site and cars tend to be problematic.
But we do have the requirement that an ADU does need to provide one onsite within the property boundaries. Parking space for each AD, for, for the ADU. However, the state has four scenarios that they've incorporated into their guidelines. That I mentioned previously that allow such property to not have to provide that parking if they meet those criteria. And I don't think that there's anything that we locally could do to. Ignore those state requirements similar to the four-foot setback, for example. So if a property met any of those four state mandated criteria, then the property would not need to. Provide that onsite parking requirement. But with that said, the criteria really. Seems to focus on properties close to transit. And there, the majority of the town, given the larger lot, lot areas. And where the transit is located and the relatively small distance that's delineated in, in the state language. Really limits the amount of properties I would even qualify potentially for applying those criteria.
Okay. Okay, let's move on.
Okay, um, so next slide, please, Anthony. And so just as I mentioned, the amendments that are before you tonight do touch two different chapters of the municipal code. The accessory dwelling unit ordinance itself, as well as the definition ordinance. And those are just limited to consistency for what an ADU and now a JADU are defined as. Next slide. So this is a public hearing as required for any legislative land use change. Public notice was done in accordance with all of the minimum requirements. We have been maintaining a list of interested parties who have been following this. This topic and they were notified as well. And to date, staff has not received any comments from any members of the community or the public. Next slide. So with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that the council may have on the topic. Thank you.
So I'd like to formally announce that the public hearing is open. I'll take questions from the council, public comments, and then comments from the council. Does anyone have any questions for Stephanie?
I actually do.
Please, Mike.
So Stephanie, just on the process question. What are the stages we would go through before this was formally adopted if, if we move forward?
If the council introduces the ordinance tonight, it would go back to your meeting in October for a second reading. If that second reading was approved, it then would become effective 45 days after. So if those steps happen, you're looking at mid-November, the, before the ordinance becomes effective.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, are there any public comments?
So I haven't received any public comments, no chat messages, emails, texts, and I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'll bring it back for comments from the council.
So do we, are we closing the public comment period?
Yes, we're closing the public comment period if there are none.
Yep.
Anybody have any comments?
Sure, I'll make a comment.
I, I do after.
You know, uh, you know, I essentially. Bristle as we, I think all did just last year when we had some other legislation that brought to us. Of this grab of local control by the state. Many of the people that are in the state have never served in local government. And, you know, they want to essentially enforce what they see. As what's the right way to go forward and potentially ruining the. The character of our town. And I think it's wrong. I think that despite the fact that obviously this is being jammed down our throats. I do believe we should, you know, take a formal stand and say, well, you know, you know, we. And actively comment on a lot of these pieces of legislation that are, that are trying to do that. I think we need to do it as a town, a council with a letter from the mayor as well as individually and encourage our constituents to do the same. And I, you know, I just, I feel that it's. Now, I feel that it's very inappropriate, I guess, that's my comment. And so I, I agree with, I agree with the stance of, of Chairman Lane and, and two of the other commissioners. To object to this, you know, on this, on the standpoint of. You know, the, the state is taking, taking over local control, which is really inappropriate. Anyway, thank you very much.
Elizabeth?
So I, my, my comment is that I wholeheartedly agree with Chairman Lane of the Planning Commission and the other two members. That this is from the, from the state mandate, it's really bad planning. It's like just kind of a, a broad brush of one size fits all kind of a thing. Not taking into consideration our special circumstances of our community. And we do really want to maintain our. Protection and privacy with appropriate setbacks. Therefore, even though the state is coming down in a very, very heavy-handed way. I believe our planning staff has come up with some very. Good and creative solutions that do incentivize and protect our. Current zoning ordinances to a great extent. And so I want to applaud our planning staff for doing that. And as far as writing letters of objections and to the state about this, I think we could certainly do that. I don't think that at this point in time that it will have much effect. I think the bigger, bigger issues that we all need to rally around is when another. Massive bill like SB 50 or the other three bills that actually were almost on, ready to go to the governor. But got shut down right at the last minute for imposing. Onerous new and massive housing requirements for even jurisdictions like ours. So I think next year, we're gonna have to. Gird our loins and go to battle in a big way with our other colleagues of Seaman T.O. County, which I'm doing with, through CKEG. And the Legislative Committee. So right now, I think that I'm, I'm in support of how staff has tried to modify this onerous. ADU and JADU or requirements for us.
Mike or Carrie? Comments?
Yeah, I'm happy to, I agree with almost everything everybody has said. I, I think Bill used the term bristle, and I think that's an appropriate term for what I perceive as state overreach here. And I, I. Think that we should. Make sure that we are focused on more efforts like this. And where I think I might disagree a little bit with Elizabeth is there are gonna be big efforts that we have to fight. But I think there's gonna be a lot of small efforts coming like this in the future, and I think we need to be on guard for those as well. And I don't know whether our Subcommittee on SB 50 is the way to do it or not, but I think we need to come out for a way of really trying to follow these. I am also wondering if there's any way we can accomplish the goals of the Planning Commission by perhaps adding a preface or something to this. That, that states our, our. Our opinion that this is state overreach, we're doing it under, you know, under duress essentially, and we don't think it's good for the town of Atherton. And perhaps even adding that if there's any litigation or anything that sets us aside, we'd like our old. Old reg, old regulations to go back into effect immediately, which I don't think would happen in the absence of some statement from us. But I'm trying to think if there's anything we can do. I agree that the town staff has been creative and helpful to try to mitigate the downside here. But I would like to make some kind of public statement here that, that I think this is bad governance from the state. And as Elizabeth called it sort of one, cramming down one size fits all. Those are my thoughts.
Great, thanks.
I have to agree with you on the preface, you know, that would send a message to the state if we go forward with this. I agree with you.
We can amend the severability section of the ordinance to articulate that if there's any legal challenge in validating the ordinance. That the town's previous ordinance shall govern the restrictions. We could also add a recital to the purpose and intent to explain that the town council is adopting this. Because it's required by state law to reflect your intent. And based on the discussion of the council tonight, we can go back to HCD and see if there is a way where we can add a section to the ordinance. That would require a property owner to provide a deed restriction that would compel them to. Live in at least one of the three, you know, primary resident ADU or JADU following the five years. And that would be a belt and suspenders approach for purposes of enforcement.
I like that approach.
But it's not five years, it's, it's until 2025, right?
Right, it's not enforce, right, it becomes enforceable when.
Well, if I could, through the mayor?
Yeah.
You know, obviously I can echo a lot of comments that are already made. And the issue of the overreach from the state, if we don't push back SB 50 component. Is gonna be knocking on our door and it's just getting closer and closer that we do completely lose state, our local control. And that is disturbing. I know that we can try to massage this as much as possible, and I completely agree with the Planning Commission's objections to how this was done. And it's, it's forced. So. I, I, I think that staff's done a tremendous job at trying to work within. Within the, the, the boundaries of being forced to try to make it as good as we can for our residents. But I still have a very hard time digesting, being on the other side of it, seeing the way a lot of people react to it, what it's implemented. The enforcement component is, is frankly poor, poor, even having language related to enforcement. The amount of resources that go into play to try to do enforcement is, it's like chasing your tail. So. I, I, I just, it, it's difficult to swallow. And I, and I don't think that, like Mike said, I, I don't think that they're done. And these may be little granules, but all these little granules add up.
Yeah. Well, I, I'll, I'll make the comment that I think that this, the, the, the real problem here. The biggest problem is the setbacks. I mean, we, we all have felt new properties going in in the last 15 years that have gone right up. To the side and rear setbacks where. We all didn't have property that were on top of us all of a sudden. That's happened because houses have gotten larger and every inch has been built in that could be built in. And this just enables those setbacks to be reduced by quite a bit. I mean, 10 feet versus four feet is a lot. So I agree with my colleagues, I would support staff putting together a letter and us sending a letter. I, I don't believe it's gonna do a whole lot, but I think. It's the objection that the Planning Commission logged in and, and we should do the same. And I agree that staff has done a good, as good a job as can be done in finding some areas to push back where we can preserve as much of the setback as we can. And I, I like the staff's solution much better than the state's solution. So I think we're gonna need a motion to adopt this.
I actually would be interested in hearing thoughts about the language that Mona suggested or, because I do, would like to see something in here, which I called a preface. And Mona, I think you properly said it's not a preface, it's a, it's a whereas clause or something. But I, I actually like to see something stronger than what you had mentioned earlier, Mona. I'd like to say that, a statement that says we would, you know. We, we are opposed to this, we believe it's inconsistent with the general plan of Atherton and bad for the town of Atherton, to some words to that effect.
And, and that if it's challenged in the courts. That we revert back to our, our current statutes.
Yep. So Mona, I apologize for putting you on the spot, would you mind sort of repeating what you had said earlier?
You're muted.
Sorry, not at all, I was actually working on language as we were talking about this. So there would be three proposed changes. One would be to the severabilities, would be a severability section of the ordinance, which also states that should the. Substance and contents of this ordinance be struck, struck down by any court of competent jurisdiction. Then the previous ordinance in effect as of, and then we'll put. The date on which this is adopted, shall govern accessory dwelling units in Atherton. We will add language to clarify that but for the state's mandating adoption of such ordinance. The town would not have adopted these restrictions on accessory dwelling units as it believes that it's inconsistent with its own. General plan and land use powers. And then circle back with HCD to add a provision in the code. That would require some sort of a deed restriction. That language would say something along the lines of owner occupancy required. The property owner must reside in the primary dwelling unit, the ADU, or the newly created JADU. The owner must record a deed restriction which shall run with the land and shall include. The owner must record a deed restriction which shall run with the land and shall include both of the following: one, a prohibition on the sale of the ADU and/or junior accessory dwelling unit separate from the sale of the single-family residence, including a statement that the deed restriction may be enforced against future purchasers, and a restriction on the size and attributes of the ADU and/or JADU unit that conforms with this chapter.
And the timing of which it the 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 state law allows them to be exempt from that, which is twenty twenty-five, January one, twenty twenty-five.
Understood.
What, on that, Mona, just so I understand now, the deed restrictions are always making me a little uncomfortable, but um with this deed restriction you're envisioning here, would that permit an individual to rent a residence that might include an ADU and a JD- JDU, but rent it to one family? I I own, I want to move to wherever, I'm gonna move to to New York, but I want to keep my home here, I want to rent it out. Would that deed restriction have any effect on that?
It would because um if only if you, first of all, were were operating under the assumption that as a homeowner in Atherton, you are also have requested either an ADU and/or a JAU. So those are the facts under which we're operating. And then you've added that you want to move to New York and rent your property out. Um, this requires that um the property owner upon construction of an ADU or JADU to reside in one of the three uh units, whether it's the primary, the JADUs or the ADU, so you would not be able to relocate to um New York and rent out your property at that time. Your two options would be either sale or to not construct an ADU or JADU.
I'd love to hear other people's thoughts on that, but that that sort of rubs me the wrong way. I think we have had people who ran, you know, moved to New York and rent their house for three years or five years or whatever, maybe come back, maybe don't.
Yeah.
And I think there's nothing really wrong with that.
I agree with Mike, I think that's really uh too restrictive and too owners. Uh, there's got to be some other middle ground. I I don't think that that kind of deed restriction would work.
Just to clarify, what the deed restriction just provides the town with the ability to enforce it. That is indicative of what the law requires. So the legislation already requires the property owner to reside in one of the three structures. And the solution in that case again is you don't have to take advantage of building an ADU or a JADU. You can simply do nothing, and at which point you have complete flexibility. And and I'm not trying to be flippant, I understand that this is a very frustrating topic, and it does um alter property interests. Um, I'm just kind of the messenger.
Okay, so I have another scenario. So what if you buy a property um that has a main house and an ADU and a JADU, I mean uh already built? And you have your entire large family living in everything for a period of time, and then all the kids grow up, move away, uh, go to college, and you're there aging in place, and um you rent out uh the ADUs or the big house and live in an ADU. Um, and then at some point you want to uh move away and want to uh rent the entire property. I mean, at what period of time do you have total control over your property?
George.
Mona, can it be constructed so that it only takes place with when you rent one of the units?
I'm not sure I'm following, I'm sorry.
No, the the scenario that's being presented is you can rent your entire house and and move to Napa, but you shouldn't be able to rent independently more than one part of your house and move to Napa.
Right. I'm gonna have to ask Stephanie, actually. Um, I think she might know better than I do.
So the question, um, I'm sorry, I'm following this as well, that the the deed restriction, restrictive covenant, whatever the document is that gets recorded against the property, would just simply state a requirement that the property owner of record at the time that the accessory dwelling unit was approved post twenty twenty-five in this case, that that property owner occupy either the main residence, the ADU, or the JADU if there is a JADU associated with it. So if the property owner wanted to move to Napa and such agreement was recorded against the property, that would be a violation of the town's municipal code and a violation of the agreement recorded against property.
Yeah, so other jurisdictions um require recording of a restrictive covenant, and it states that the ADU and the JADU cannot be rent separately unless um from the main residence, unless one of them is owner occupied. So I think that's kind of the simplest solution is kind of what George was saying, right? The owner needs to be on site in order to rent out the other unit to a different individual. If the owner is off-site, then the property can only be rented to one family unit.
Is this to uh Lisa, this is to prevent the philosophy of a triplex type mentality?
Correct. And and the thought is, you know, if you've got an owner on site, they're kind of managing it, so you don't have a situation where you've got, you know, three different tenants running amok.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So I think we can simplify the wording a bit, and it would uh it could be recorded at time of, you know, the the town approving it, but as you indicated, it wouldn't take effect until twenty twenty-five. So it does have the benefit, I know there's concern about putting restrictions on property, but it has the benefit of informing future property owners that this restriction is in effect without them needing to review our zoning code and understanding that element. So it does have that um advantage.
And I and I will say, I think with a owner occupancy type philosophy, that the condition of the property still stays in a in a higher maintenance manner, and frankly, some of the issues that occur when you completely give away your property to somebody, you 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 have owners maintaining local or owner control.
Well, I I just want to add that the one concern I have with the language that Mona was stating is that it would prohibit a property owner from renting their property, and I think it's not that uncommon that at some point during uh Atherton homeowners' careers that they move away and rent their property for, you know, some period of time. It may be a year and and it may be a little more. Um, but I've talked to lots of people that have done that, and I don't want to have a provision in in our code that would prohibit that. Uh, I I don't think that exists right now, and I it doesn't seem right to me to add that.
No, but they can't, they can't assign that there will also be leases on the two other pieces of property that are also on that property. That's what I think is, that's what I think Mona is saying, Rick, is that it the the owner can go ahead and let rent the house, okay, sure, no problem, but then there can't be with with no owner there and just a tenant in the main house, there can't be secondary and tertiary renters in the ADU and the JADU, which I think is appropriate.
But we can certainly clarify, we will clarify the language to reflect, I I understand some of the concerns that that I'm hearing from the council, and we'll definitely provide clarifying language to, number one, provide an enforcement opportunity for the council to make sure that what we don't have is a situation where we have investors coming in and building all these ADUs or JADUs and simply renting every single one to three different pro- three different um tenants. Um, but on the other hand, accounting for situations where due to job relocation, due due to other um cer- situations, a property owner may not be residing on their primary residence for a period of time.
Great, George?
And this is for Lisa, and I know it's rhetorical, and I'm sure I know what your answer is, but for the regional housing needs process with the junior ADU, we're basically adding twenty-five hundred units to the town of Atherton that are potentially affordable housing units, and I know we just have to provide opportunity for housing to be built, uh, we don't have to build it. Um, so doesn't this count toward the Reno calculus?
It does count towards the Reno calculation, um, but one thing I'm hearing, just to warn you, we can't, we are not going to be able to count all of our housing by second dwelling units, ADUs and JDUs, um, but we are going to be able to show a large percentage through um construction of ADUs and JDUs. And we've had really good um production to date, so we're able to substantiate that. We've also done surveys in the past that show they are truly affordable, um, and so we'll probably do that again to show that to um to the state as well to justify the use of them as affordable units.
Cool, thanks.
Okay. Uh, I think we need a motion.
Can I make one, excuse me, through the mayor? Um, may I make one clarifying comment? Um, I had mentioned that uh after second reading, the ordinance would become effective forty-five days after, it'd actually be thirty days after.
Okay.
Thank you.
George, did you have a comment? Bill?
Yeah, uh, so I I'd like to make the motion that uh inclusive of the language that Mona is going to draft with regards to expressing our concern over the state's overreach, uh as well as having the clawback capability and the deed issues identified that we move forward with this because it's very clear that we don't have much choice.
I'll talk about.
Okay.
Weest?
Hi.
Widmer?
Electantly, yes.
Le- Lemprous?
Hi.
I smell Louis?
Hi.
And Mayor DeBolia?
Yes. Okay, I, so that took a substantial amount of time. I want to move through the rest of the agenda as much as we can now, and we'll first do item number nine that was uh polled from the consent calendar. Elizabeth, do you want to say why you pulled this?
So the reason I pulled it was not to dispute or discuss the uh designation, designees of the mayor and the vice mayor, mayor being the um primary and the vice mayor being an alternate to attend, but it has to do with uh the reason um we uh send delegates is to vote on their resolutions, and there is um a new resolution that is being, going to be discussed, and it's on page six of twenty uh in the packet, having to do with uh social media uh censorship. And I just felt that we should have a little bit of a discussion about that, but it's not on the agenda that that's part of what we're approving. So if it were strictly just approving the uh designated delegates, um, that's fine with me, I have no problem with it. So I just have to ask the city manager and city attorney if we could have a discussion about this uh proposed uh social media censorship that's been.
You are correct, Madam Vice Mayor, it is not on the agenda, and the league conference is the seventh, eighth, and ninth of. Uh, and I think they do the the voting on the.
Last day, last day afternoon.
Yeah, so if you wish, if the council desires, we could actually put that resolution onto your study session for the seventh.
I would really appreciate that because I think that it deserves um a little discussion.
I'd read what the title is, just for FYI for the rest of the the council. It's a resolution of the General Assembly of the League of California Cities calling for an amendment to section two thirty of the Communications Decency Act of nineteen ninety-six to require social media companies to remove materials which promote criminal activities.
Okay, Bill?
So, yeah, uh, so I I mentioned this to George during my one-on-one with him, I said, yeah, in the past, in addition to identifying a person or sometime therefore in the future, we did discuss as a council how we wanted the delegate to vote. And so uh so I agree with the vice mayor's position that says, let's let's discuss this as early as we can, um, and just make sure we're all on board with how the vote will happen.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so we will put that on the study session agenda. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt?
Item nine.
Item nine.
So move.
So, second.
Okay. Weest?
Hi.
Widmer?
Yes.
Empress?
Hi.
I smell Louis?
Hi.
Mayor DeBolia?
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, that brings us to item number seventeen, direction regarding town town participation in the Heroes Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, this one was on the uh council member comments at the last meeting, and the council requested that it be placed on this agenda for consideration of participation by the town. You have the staff report about the Heroes Project. It originated from Menlo Park, it's a Facebook page where people can create and write stories, post videos honoring their neighbors that are performing acts of kindness during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Yeah, uh, just to clarification, I think it really originated from one of the council members in Menlo Park. I I don't know if Menlo Park formally does a position on it, but he personally started it, and a whole number of council members in the county supported it. Is there any uh, are there any questions?
Actually, that was my question. I does Menlo Park support, is this a formal Menlo Park thing, or is this just something that that Ray did?
Uh, Ray did it, and they posted it on their uh in Menlo, you know, face uh uh website.
I was just looking for it there, I couldn't find it, so.
Um, I sent it to George, I thought it was getting sent around to everybody.
No, you were looking at it on their website, the town's website?
Uh, I I sent to George what Ray sent to me, it was.
No, I know, yeah.
It was titled in Menlo.
I I just, I got a call from Ray saying, you know, you're a vice mayor, I'm kind of putting this together, would you like to be part of it, sounds good? I said, wow, that's really a good idea, you know, and that was the extent of it. So I haven't really followed up with much of it anyway, so.
I think basically, what from what I understand that he's done is uh basically it's encouraged residents to identify someone that's been helpful during the COVID nineteen crisis, and uh those people that have been helpful have gotten identified. Uh, and and I, well, there was one question that we had, which is, well, how do we vet who who who's real and who isn't? And that's a fair question.
Yeah, because it looks, it looks like that Ray is the one who's vetting whoever he wants to nominate, uh, you know, that's all the, all the nominations that seem to be getting any sort of press, that it all coming as a direct release from Ray.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, it this does not feel to me like a city thing or a town thing for us.
Yeah, I um, I'm fine, you know, we don't go forward with this, and, you know, I can tell him to take my.
But the only, the only reason that it came before us is from Anthony to include notice of it in his list serve, so that other members of the town, you know, cit- the citizens would be aware of it, and if they want to nominate someone, they could. I mean, I think that's a good thing, we're in a crisis, if if people know other people that have done good things during this crisis, it'd be a good thing to give them recognition.
Yeah, my my concern, though, is you had an individual who was running or thought he was running, you know, he is running for office, who started something himself.
Yeah, yeah.
And and I don't think it's appropriate for us to to jump onto that, it's not a, it's not a city thing or a town thing, it feels like it's a much more electoral focused thing.
I I I have no objection to that.
I agree with that.
Okay.
So.
Under the next item?
Yeah.
Uh, the next item is direction to staff regarding next steps on withdrawal from the South Bay Waste Management Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you you again have their staff report there. Uh, between the last meeting and this meeting, the City Council Subcommittee consisting of council members Widmer and Weest, staff and representative. and representative from R three, Garth Schultz, who's on the phone with us as well, met with Green Waste. And Green Waste, following that discussion, they decided to, to meet the town in the middle of the, the million dollar additional cash that was necessary to exit the SBWMA. We anticipated approximately a million dollars, but the SBWMA came back with about two point two. So we requested from Green Waste an additional two hundred and eighty-five thousand. So they did meet us in the middle, contributing that additional two hundred and eighty-five thousand with some caveats and changes that are noted in the staff report to the project agreement, and none of which are significant for the town. So we were able to, to, to find that middle ground. And so the recommendation from the subcommittee at this point, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, subcommittee, is to continue to move forward and finalize that opportunity. You also have
Well, if I, if I could just embellish the two eighty-five. You may recall that when we talked about it, we thought that we, we were like right there in year one without, you know, overrunning our rates. I realized it was a couple of ten thousand dollars here and there, but essentially it was a break even situation. Given there could be changes to collections and how many carts get used and things like that. And if you remember, then if you looked at year two, there was a deficit of two eighty-five. And so they're essentially erasing the deficit of two eighty-five. That's how we came up with that number. After they had already said, hey, we'll help you out with three hundred thousand to help you get started. And we said, well, guess what? We want two eighty-five now. And so essentially there would not need to be any sort of rate adjustment once we get started here until the beginning of the third year is when the new rates would, we would have to add some because we would then be operating. Now, if you look at what the, if you remember from the spreadsheet, and Garth can go over that, the, the, the recology numbers, we would be using up that, the current reserve. And by the end of the, end, the middle to the end of the third year, we would also need to be able to go, based on our projections, start increasing rates again as well. So that was identified in the spreadsheet that George showed us a couple of weeks ago. So I just wanted to add some context to the two eighty-five. George, so back on it, sorry.
No, 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 no problem. So you do have the revised compensation rate revenue spreadsheet. I believe that's attachment to, connected to the, to the staff report. And as council member Widmer mentioned, Garth is on the phone from R three. And, and I and the subcommittee can answer or address any questions the council may have. It's recommended that the council either agree to the two point two from the SBWMA and authorize the exit or to reject the two point two oh three exit cost and direct staff to revoke the notice of intent. And in terms of additional comments, there was a couple of public comments received. And I believe there are members of the audience here today that would like to make a public comment on this item.
Okay. Is there any question?
Yes, about attachment number two that's in our staff report. If anyone could read my attachment number two, I'd welcome to do that because
Yeah, it was supposed to be larger and I, I apologize to the mayor.
You know, I feel like I was given incomplete information and not completely be enabled to analyze what we're talking about because it's illegible.
It was kind of, kind of small. And then in the electronic version, you can zoom in and out, but you can't do that on the screen.
Yeah, well, okay.
Yeah.
Want to have Garth talk about anything?
Well, well, before Garth does, let me just see if there's any questions of clarification that anyone has. Okay, I, I have one. So George, it's not clear to me whether staff is making a recommendation. You said you want direction, either accept it and go forward or reject it and withdraw the letter of withdrawal from SBWMA. What, what is staff's recommendation or does staff not have a recommendation?
I do have a recommendation. My recommendation is option number one to agree to the two point two oh three exit cost. Accept the financial contribution from Green Waste toward that exit cost and direct staff to facilitate remittance of the exit cost from the town's rate stabilization fund, directing the city attorney to complete final revisions to the franchise agreement and authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the town.
Great. Are there any other questions?
I, I do have one on the, on the exit costs. I asked this last time, George. He told me there's absolutely no way to get anyone else to look at that again. So when you say accept it, if we accept it, that means we are giving up on that and that there will never be an opportunity or an effort to, to get that reduced. Is that correct?
That is correct. The decision of the SBWMA board with respect to that number was final. There is no appeal. However, the two point two oh three oh one five does include an estimate of one hundred thousand dollars of administrative costs, which could be, could be less than the hundred thousand. But the basic exit number is two point one plus that hundred thousand.
Okay.
I, I have a question, which is if we do this with Green Waste, I understand that we will essentially be using all of the rate stabilization fund. It, it sounds like there'll be somewhere from a hundred to a hundred and to two hundred thousand dollars and, and somewhere in the hundred thousand dollar range left once we get into the relationship with Green Waste. And that will be because the cost, there's about one point eight or one point nine million in that fund now. The cost will be two point one million. And there's some additional funds covering our costs that Green Waste is due to provide us. So my first question is just to clarify that there'll be somewhere in the range of one hundred to two hundred thousand in the rate stabilization fund when we begin with Green Waste. And at that point, that Bill mentioned that we'd have to raise rates in three years. I, I understand we're proposing to raise rates this, this fall.
Regardless.
And, and if we don't then raise rates until that third year with Green Waste, we wouldn't be raising rates for the next two years. At that point, what is projected to be in the rate stabilization fund?
Approximately three hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Okay. Okay. Since the
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So I guess my question is, have, we have received new information just recently, one from a, a resident who has not identified himself that talked about, it's dated September fifteenth, a letter with a grid and talking about why are our costs for green waste more than what they're, they've got for Los Altos Hills and Petola Valley and a lot of other analysis. And then there was another letter that came from Mike Kelly that said that some of our calculations are wrong, some of the information and actually the amount of savings would be about four million dollars. So has all of that been taken into consideration with the city manager's recommendation at this point? I don't think that I've seen a new analysis on this.
Yes, and I did include some of that in some of my one-on-one conversations with the members of the council that I had and, and provided a summary response as well. Recology's letter with all due respect to Mike. You know, the, the town has other considerations that we're looking at with respect to the SBWMA. Recology is a great company and there's, there's nothing there of concern to us of large concern. Our concern is that we are no longer consistent demographic in the SBWMA. They, they have outgrown us and our costs are going to continue to escalate beyond our control without ability to affect them via input. And so with respect to the recology letter, the numbers and assertions still need to be approved by the SBWMA board. I don't think they've actually formally done that yet. There's additional changes to compensation for vehicles and amendments. There's a depreciation cost as well that needed to be included in there. And there's rates that will recall, impact recology and the SBWMA that aren't really accounted for in twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, such as landfill or organic tipping fees, additional capital costs, SB thirteen eighty-three, that's largely with respect to the SBWMA and other unanticipated costs due to China soared COVID nineteen and other impacts. And I think that Garth just noted to me that the board has adopted those numbers as part of their budget process.
Yeah, so we've got, well, the other thing is, is that Mike's, Mike's tonnage in there, the SBWMA or the SBR portion, not the recology portion, but the, the other portion, which is a little bit more than fifty percent now and growing, is based on tip fees. And how those tip fees will apply and they're applied to tonnage. Okay, and just to kind of put you, you know, and let you understand a little bit about where we've gone with tip fees over a period of time. Our tip fees have, have increased a lot in the last couple of years. You know, the organics, which we are one of the largest generators of organics, you know, have, have generate, have increased over sixty percent since we've been here. Okay, the black bin tonnage was also off a little bit from our projections. And that's, that's gone up a substantial amount. Pure food waste, which we would get, say, from some of the other locations like the school cafeterias or from the circus club, you know, those tip fees have gone up seventy, seventy-eight percent, just, you know, in the last couple of years. So you have to look at the tip fees. You have to look at what else is going on. Green Waste has said fixed price. Here it is. We're going to take care of it, collecting it as well as disposing it. Here we've got with SBWMA, we've got an agency who has a subcontractor recology. And as George said, they're doing an excellent job. Okay, there's not a question over them. Both companies will do a good job picking it up. But then they take it to the transfer station, which by the way, we pay for, plus all additions that go into that transfer station and all the extra manpower that goes in to sort the waste. And that turns into the tip fees. It's based on per tonnage. Now, a number of the other jurisdictions, are, are the overall tonnage to SBWMA or to the, to the SPR organization, are they, are they've gone down due to COVID? Yes, because they've had, they have a lot of shops that have closed, some have gone out of business. If you look at the, the tonnage at some of the towns, for example, Burlingame, their tonnage has gone down in the commercial section substantially. Okay, so the total tonnage going in there is less. Our tonnage has recovered and it's back there or even higher than where it was. And so I went ahead and I looked at where we've been and where we're going and how we're going. I forwarded some of that information to Garth. Garth has validated it. He's done his own analysis. He can talk to that. And then on top of all that, as I mentioned to you, there is the issue with regards to overages. And, and Green Waste is going to be very, very generous with us with dealing with overages and things like that. So we, we have a fixed price with, with Green Waste moving forward. And that takes care of also the, the cost of the disposal, processing and disposal. So we don't have to worry about that. Our, just like this past year, you know, recology has, you know, a Blossom Valley disposal for organics. The contract ran out. They raised the rate, you know, over a hundred percent. So, and in three years it will go out again, plus the, the other half of our organics goes to another disposal site. And so we have a series of disposal locations. And the SBWMA through, through, you know, Joe La Mariana and his team, they negotiate these contracts as they come up over a period of time. We've got a fixed price contract with, with regards to Green Waste. Plus, Green Waste is also saying that we will be you know, compliant with AB thirteen eighty-three. Whereas that has not been included because it got postponed by the state due to the COVID situation and the, and the costs associated with it. And they didn't want to burden the cities with having to spend more money. They wanted them to spend money on, on things like, you know, combating the COVID. So, so there's other things that we're ahead of the game in by going to a fixed price contract, which is makes it, makes it very, very attractive. And there's other things that are going to happen, as George puts out. You know, if all the other jurisdictions, which are mostly commercial, or they have a good deal of their waste streams are commercial. If they feel that, you know, to get their commercial rates up, which by the way, are very low at this point in time, not meeting the government requirements. There's going to have to be a substantial additional capital requirements and, and potentially manpower issues associated with it. So, you know, Joe's group, you know, they look all the time at what, you know, what they need to do and they put a capital plan together the same as we do. And they do a very good job at it, but it's extra costs that the board approves and then we have to pay our piece of it. Whereas Green Waste is already doing that. And I'll also add one last thing is, is that oftentimes when Hillary Gans, who is, you know, he's a senior engineer up there, coming up with all these things, whenever he's presenting new ideas, he always references, and oh, by the way, if you want to see this thing working in, you know, in Ernst, go down to the Green Waste facility. So Green Waste is ahead in, in the processing process. So anyway, we'll let Garth say something if you'd like. I'll be quiet, sorry.
Thank you, council members. Garth Schultz with R three consulting. With respect to the two letters, the one from recology and the one from the resident. On, on the resident's comments and claims, I, I have no answers to their comparisons with the other agencies. We did not evaluate other agency costs. The RFP that was issued, to which Green Waste responded, had them list out pricing and we negotiated against that pricing. We weren't engaged to conduct comparative analysis to contracts that were established between Wayman Race Recovery and other agencies. So unfortunately, I, I can't provide a, a comment on the accuracy or legitimacy of the claims there, nor do we have a supplementary analysis for that. With respect to recology's letters, Mr. Kelly, Mike, your, your numbers are correct and they're accurate to what the SBWMA's budget is. And then I'm not disputing that in any way. We have somewhat different projections around two different factors. One, the SBWMA tonnages for their budgeted year for Atherton are somewhat lower than historical averages. And they're, and they do rolling average trends. So I would imagine that theirs are accurate for their own kind of projected material flows. But in any given year, those can shift mid-year somewhat significantly. We chose projected tonnages that were somewhat higher and more in keeping with the three-year historical average. The other thing that we did in consultation with the town and the subcommittee is make some adjustment to the projected per ton rates, anticipating that there may be a need for mid-year rate adjustments around special rate requests coming from the processor, SBR, their contracted requests, as well as other anticipated potential mid-year changes in twenty twenty that the town felt would potentially be on the table, given some of the other cost concerns that have been considered, but not addressed by SBWMA in the coming twenty twenty-one fiscal year budget. So there are differences between the two. I would not characterize them in there. They are just different means of estimating. What is in recology's letter is, is true to what has been put forth in SBWMA's budget for projected tonnage and per ton rates as adopted by the board. We just have a different methodology for projecting those costs. And it is, you know, an exercise in projection. A percentage point here or there can make a bit of a difference in terms of the overall comparison. It is also difficult to predict what recology or SBWMA's long-term costs are going to be because they are adopted on a more annualized basis. So I'm happy to take specific questions, but we did consider both of those pieces of information. Did a line-by-line analysis to the, the variance between our analysis and what recology presented as SBWMA figures, which again, were accurate. And we don't have a comparison to the, the property owner letter.
Okay, are there any other questions? I don't see any questions. Is there any public comment?
Yes, sir. We do have Mike Kelly who would like to make a public comment.
Okay, is that the only public comment you have, Anthony?
That's the only one other than the written public comments that we've received and that were distributed to the council.
Okay, great. Mike, why don't you make?
Mr. Kelly, I'll let you know, you have three minutes and I'll start the timer now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor DeGolia, Vice Mayor Lewis and council members. I am Mike Kelly. I'm the general manager of Recology San Mateo County. I did want to speak to you tonight about the letter I sent to the city manager identifying a miscalculation. I did note during the town study session on September second that Garth has just talked about. Again, in my letter, I identified that the town's original compensation for year one is three million seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, whereas using the SBWMA model, the, the amount is only three million four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Now again, as Garth described, I'm not aware of what volumes they may have used to change the SBWMA number to this number I see on the study session. But again, the, the sheet that I provided in my letter is the actual SBWMA projected costs for the town of Atherton. And again, when the town is considering these new, the new service provider, I wanted to make sure that you were aware of this overstatement because it is too important to ignore. The corrected amount that I used has a fifteen-year compensation for recology of approximately seventy-nine million dollars, which is again about four million dollars less than the study session green waste recovery fifteen-year total compensation. Again, four million dollars less for the term of the agreement, plus the town gets to keep the one point eight million dollars of rate stabilization funds that they've already collected from the town's ratepayers. And I just need you to know that the analysis I completed used the same future cost projection calculations identified during the study session. The only change I made was to correct the starting point. So again, using your Garth's same projection calculations, that's how I got there. Again, you know, like you described, you know, recology has faithfully served the town over the previous ten years. You know, we've always received good grades as far as our customer satisfaction surveys go. And we attribute that to be a one hundred percent employee-owned company. So I hope that by providing you with this financial benefit analysis, that the town council will choose to retain a recology as your dedicated franchise holler. Bottom line, transitioning to another service provider will cost Atherton residents, based on my calculations, and again, right off the SBWMA projection sheet, approximately five point eight million dollars over the term of the agreement, or about fourteen dollars per month per resident each month of the agreement. So again, thank you for your time and consideration and, and I will try to answer any questions the town may have.
I don't see any other public comment.
I have known, sir.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council, comments from members of the council.
If I can through the mayor.
Please, Carrie.
You know, I want to thank everybody for all their input on this and there's probably not much to add to it. But one of my comments I'd like to add is there are a lot of costs that are going, that are being deferred off of the rates with the anticipation of the impacts with COVID nineteen. So I think that we're, you know, in a position that moving into the green waste agreement, we have some stabilization and outlook that we can actually see and predict. Unfortunately, I don't feel the same about how this transition or how all of a sudden we're here at the end and we're getting now an engagement at this point to dispute numbers. Recology's been here, so recology's been able to be here to be at the table for a year or more. And, you know, I've just, I, I don't particularly like the fact that we're paying a two point two million dollar ransom because it was nowhere near where we were. And I'm very disappointed that this is a, it almost feels to me that the relationship has gotten so severed that these are all tactics to try to keep us in a bad relationship at this point. So I'm, I'm comfortable in saying I'm ready to move forward and start a new relationship.
Oh, if I can make a comment?
Sure, go ahead, Elizabeth.
I agree with council member Wees that it seems like the relationship with the SBWMA has become bad and to such a state that it would be hard to continue with them, especially in the current arrangement with representatives and things. What concerns me, what really concerns me in this whole process of analysis and the ad hoc committee and the numbers and things coming from at the last minute here in evidence that maybe all these numbers that everyone has been using are wrong. One, it's like flying a, flying a, steering a big ship. One little degree of separation and you're going to go off the edge of the earth instead of where you want to go. Even in the best scenario that I think we were looking at last time, that we would only be saving over a fifteen-year period of time about two million dollars by going to Green Waste, notwithstanding all the other bells and whistles things that seems like they, you know, would provide that maybe recology doesn't. But to me, to use up our rate stabilization fund a hundred percent, and it was, I would, I had a council member guarantee me that he would not go down that road unless he got a significant reduction in the exit fee and he would not use up the entire rate stabilization fund to pay to get us to go out. So I feel that that's a little, I feel a little deceived about that, but I, I just, my best interest is for the residents. And if we're looking at what Mike Kelly is saying, a savings of five point eight million dollars, which would include the rate stabilization fund and the savings of four million. I mean, how can that be really verified? I mean, could that be guaranteed? And I understand that with Green Waste, we've got a fixed price, but there are other costs that certainly will come up along the way. And the upfront costs of getting in, the bar is really high and it uses up our ratepayers' savings account for smoothing rate increases. And we won't have that. And what George said in, you know, maybe year three or so, we will have accumulated maybe another three hundred thousand dollars. Well, that's not on pace as the last ten years, we accumulated one point nine million dollars. So I have a hard time saying, yeah, hey, let's, let's change providers right here, right now. Because the evidence that has been presented to me is not that compelling. So I'm still not convinced and I would like to have more convincing if we're going to really do this. Because I want what's best for and the best value.
I'm not sure if we lost Vice Mayor Lewis.
Seems like we lost her.
Yep, I, I thought I left everybody.
I'm here. I'm here.
We couldn't hear what you said at the end.
I just said, I just said, that's it. So I was done.
Okay. Mike, do you have a comment?
I do, I do, and I, I appreciate what, what Elizabeth was just talking about. I am, I put some value, I'm just gaining more control over this. And, and I feel like moving to Green Waste, we have more control as opposed to being in the SBWMA. And I also think that we are de-risking the future a little bit. So we have a little, a little more certainty there. I get some comfort out of that. I do wish it was a, a more dramatic cost savings, but I think it's sufficient for me to feel comfortable saying that we are best serving the people of Atherton by moving forward with, with Green Waste at this time.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, Carrie touched on the fact that, you know, we tried to negotiate a contract similar to what we're being, we're getting from Green Waste with recology. And Mr. Kelly and his team refused to really negotiate any of the key terms that we felt were appropriate for our town with the comment that we've, we've agreed this with everybody else and so that's what you've got. Whereas, you know, right at the beginning of the contract, you know, we took the base contract and, you know, if you go over all the different contracts, you know, after I got involved with this, it turned out that several of the other jurisdictions have special provisions in there. So, you know, I, you know, some of this actually could have been avoided, the whole scenario. As I mentioned to you before, the thing could have been avoided if, if the executive director would have pushed forward to have both a commercial rate as well as where we're putting all of our capital these days, as well as a residential rate. But they refused to do that. And then they refused to even negotiate the contract for, as you could see in George's letter, essentially pennies per year. And I, I felt that, yeah, I would, I would have hoped that we would have had a ten percent savings with this, it made the, the situation easy. I'm not happy about giving all the money away that we have in, in our rate stabilization fund. I feel a little bit uncomfortable that we're doing that, but I also feel that this is the right contract for us. And I think that Green Waste is ahead of where the SBWMA is and is going to get us ahead right from the get-go, being on thirteen eighty-three. So, you know, it's not, there's nothing against in my mind, you know, I like Hillary, I like Joe. I like the team, I like the team that's up with recology too. But, but I think that this is our, our best approach. And I think that Green Waste has demonstrated to us they're willing, their willingness to be flexible and to try and work with us by when we, you know, they gave us some money and we came back and, and this council said, can you go back and get some more money? And we did. And, 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 you know, they weren't enthralled with, with, with doing that, you know, because they're financing a lot of things early. And it's transition's going to cost money, but they agreed to come up with something to keep us essentially neutral for two full years. So I feel, you know, I feel that, that's, that's a good demonstration on, on partnership. And so, anyway, thank you.
Well, let me give a comment on, on what I think. I find the numbers very hard to work through. I mean, that we couldn't see attachment to is a problem, but I think the numbers, the most important thing is that staff has made a recommendation to go with Green Waste after its detailed review, and I know the committee is supporting that also. I, I find, and we, we got this email today from an Atherton resident questioning why the Green Waste rates for Atherton are so much higher than they are for Los Altos Hills. And I, I don't have any basis to evaluate that, and I know that R three hasn't done that review. So I find it very difficult to deal with the numbers here. I find, I, I agree that it's extremely disappointing that we're giving up the rate stabilization fund, which we've built to be able to temper these rate increases. But I think we know that rate increases are coming and our rates have been pretty reasonable. And I think that most residents feel that. I, the big issue for me is to have some control over our future and the separation between those jurisdictions that are generating costs based on commercial, including multifamily units, and the fact that Atherton has very little commercial. So I, I'm prepared to go with the recommendation that we're getting and move forward on it. Does anybody else have a additional comment? Is there a motion?
I'm, I'm happy to move one if, if one's needed.
Go for it.
Yeah, which, which would be to continue, let me make sure we get the right language here. But anyway, it's, it would be continued with our current process to move towards Green Waste to sever from SBWMA. And I'm sure someone can articulate that better, but philosophically, that's, that's where I would be going.
George, let me clarify, do, do we need a motion or is, do you have the direction that you need?
We lose George?
George is muted.
It would be preferable if we can get a motion, please, Mayor DeGolia.
Okay, Mike is in the process of making that.
Okay.
If you, maybe you could help him with some language, Mike.
Yes, the motion could be to direct staff to continue withdrawal from SBWMA, authorize the city attorney to prepare an agreement with Green Waste and to authorize the city manager to take all necessary steps to effectuate those.
That sounds great, which I also would note is, is option one in the, the staff memo. So I would move that.
Great, I'll second that motion. Do we have a roll call?
Yes, Wees.
Hi.
Widmer.
You're, you're, you're mute, Bill.
I said I'd like to vote last, so the other council members are leading the discussion. If that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem.
Lempers?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Well, I, I really appreciate you all listening and trying your best and with the information that you have that I'm going to depend upon. And I really hope for the best that this is the best for our residents this move and we can make that happen. I'll go along with my colleagues and vote yes.
Thank you, and Mayor DeGolia?
Yes.
And now back to council member Widmer.
Since everybody else has voted yes, I'll abstain, so it's a council decision, not my rec, my, not my pushing, which I think some people have thought I've done, so.
Okay.
Noted.
Okay, I think we're done on that, that's a unanimous vote. We're moving on to item nineteen, which is authorization to release an RFP for the operation and maintenance of the proposed library cafe. George or Robert?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You have the staff report in front of you. As you know, the town center and library complex is well under construction and incorporated in the historic town hall is an approximate two hundred and fifty square foot space, which has been reserved for cafe or warming kitchen. It is in the plans as an unfinished space. And so, understanding the council's desire to find a vendor to furnish and equip the cafe as well as man it as we move towards completion and opening of the complex, we've drafted a RFP for your review and consideration. And based on feedback that has been received, the desire initially has been towards a not-for-profit vendor. And some of the requirements that we've included in the RFP is that they obtain and maintain all necessary licenses to operate, including health permits, et cetera, that they finish the cafe space, obtaining necessary permits from the town as well as the county health department. And that they maintain appropriate And that they maintain appropriate insurance to operate the facility. And we have provided preliminary selection criteria in the RFP as well. And so we are looking for your feedback in terms of your desire to move forward with the RFP. It's not an urgent item, but we do want to give sufficient time for a vendor ultimately to be able to finish the space once we get our temporary certificate of occupancy, which we anticipate near the end of June or in July, so that they can finish the space hopefully for, for opening by the end of December of 21. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions. We are looking for feedback and guidance from the council.
Any questions from the council?
I do, if I could.
Please.
Robert, is there any, if there's any, if there's no response on this RFP, are we going to, I mean, is there an opportunity to have it to vote? Because nonprofits may not be able to do build out and they may try to say, hey, you know, town, please, can you do this for us versus a vendor that in essence does profit? Is that, is this going to be easily changeable if we don't get somebody that meets the criteria?
Certainly. I mean, we would just redraft it and reissue it for, for, for profit entities. An alternative is in essence to give, you know, issue it to everybody and give bonus points to a not-for-profit vendor, if that's what you desire.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, when I was, when I was reading this, I, I thought to myself, what, why wouldn't we be allowing some other types of suppliers, as it just came up, to fulfill this? And, and one group that came to our mind is, of course, you know, we have the event coordinators that, you know, of course, catering by Dana is, is changing out and somebody has offered to take over theirs. And we're going to look at whether or not, you know, we feel that they're, they can do it in a future meeting, but we could bundle this perhaps with, with, you know, with the, the event management and possible catering combined at the park. And so I would think that we would be doing our best if we went ahead and complied it. I think it was very admirable that we say, hey, we, we would like to invite nonprofits, but I don't think a nonprofit is going to have the capital to invest to get things started. And we may be left holding the bag on that. So I think we should expand it. That's my, and my question was, why, why didn't we, excuse me, think, think about expanding it? Or is it just because the initial discussion was a nonprofit? Because that's what was brought up originally.
Well, I'm going to try and answer and George can certainly kick in. I think that we had started this effort before we had gotten notice from catering by Dana as to their desire to exit from the contract. The other thought is that the type of event management company, if we were to seek an RFP for event management services at the park, may or may not be a catering provider. If the council desires to hold back on this and maybe issue the two at the same time, which would allow for somebody to try and take advantage of both opportunities, we can certainly do that.
So would that delay things for perhaps the startup? Or you think it's a time critical thing? Why we do that now?
It's not a time critical thing at this point. I think that the desire was to get somebody near the beginning of the year so that they can get their ducks in a row to start developing plans for finishing the space pretty much right when we get that, that certificate.
Okay, thank you.
So any questions, looking for questions?
Yeah, I've, I've got a question. I apologize. Going to start with a statement, though, I promise it's a question. The, the statement is, I'm, I'm, would like very much to be able to make a trade-off between the not-for-profit and, and a, you know, for-profit operation. So I know what the, what the costs are, you know, the delta is there. Carrie mentioned build out, for example, as a cost. What would be the best way, Robert, in your mind, to, to be able to make a decision that would, that would enable us to do those trade-offs?
Well, I'm going to say that one of the, the hard parts is that we need to make it clear to whoever it is that's proposing how we are going to judge the proposals as they come in. And it is generally speaking, some effort for somebody to put that together because they're going to come out, take a look at the site, figure out what they're going to have to spend to finish it. And so as long as we make the criteria clear as to how we're going to pick one versus the other, we can do that. And that can either be done, A, by providing scoring points for picking somebody before we negotiate, or in essence, try and insert some terms for a for-profit versus a nonprofit that we're willing to consider.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I follow. So is the, the, what is your recommendation for the best way to accomplish my goal of doing those kinds of tasks? To put, is it to put one out with a preference to not-for-profits? Or is it move forward with not-for-profits and see what we get and then reconsider?
Well, you're trying to fit, the, the thing that I'm not quite clear on is, is that you're trying to figure out a, a delta and that delta is either going to be in what we get in terms of rent. Or if the preference is really towards a nonprofit that we can issue it for a nonprofit. And if we either A, don't get any responses, or the response that we get is not something that we believe is suitable, then we would just go out for a for-profit and try and fill it that way.
Okay, I'm still, I'm still confused. Someone else, I'm, I'm still confused. I'm looking for process.
It sounds like we need to get it into discussion and comments rather than just questions of clarification. Is there any other questions of clarification? Okay, are there any public comments on this item?
Don't have any comments. We don't have anyone with hands raised.
Okay, then let me bring it back for council comments. Well, I, I, I'll make a comment. I, I had questions around the same issues that, that Mike and Bill have raised. I think the most important thing here is we want somebody that will come in and operate this. And yes, we want them to operate it in a way that isn't gouging our residents and, and charging hard, high prices. The RFP is quite clear that we want any respondent to provide a menu and and, and a, and include in that menu what the costs of the items would be or their projected costs would be. I think that it would be better to go out as broadly as we can, not just limit it to nonprofits, certainly not just limit it to 501(c)(3) nonprofits. And, and we can give points to not, not-for-profit respondents. I, I think as Robert suggested, that's a smart thing to do. But it doesn't, you know, this is going to be a tough thing. It's a very small room. It's 250 square feet. My understanding, and from the beginning, we, I had talked to the woman who runs Ada's Cafe at Mitchell Park Library because that was suggested to me by a resident as an operation that's very well-run, very well-regarded by the community. And my understanding is that they're not interested in responding because the space is too small. They don't think that they could really do anything with it. I, I'm worried that it's going to be difficult to find somebody and I'd rather go out as broadly as we can. Somebody's going to have to figure out how they want Amaroso to build it out, what, what's going to go into it. There's a whole series of things that, you know, maybe they, maybe it's not a problem to figure those things out in three months, but if it, if, you know, if, if it's a woman like the woman who runs Ada's that decides to step up and do it, I don't think it's a three-month process. I think they're going to go through a whole process to figure out how to do it. So my desire is to cast the net as broadly as we can and set the criteria so we prioritize what we think is the most desirable operation. And, and I'm fine for that to be a nonprofit. The one other comment that I have is that the requirements also included that the selected vendor have all equipment installed and be ready for operation within six months of the execution of the contract. And it's my understanding that the concept was that the contract would be executed in January or February, but that the operation wouldn't start until December. And it may, and we, we ought to say that they'll have all equipment installed and the operation will be ready for, you know, to, to start whenever it is that we tell them they need to start, not four or five months before that. That didn't make sense to me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Carrie.
I completely agree. I think that there is going to be a risk that we may not get a vendor that is willing to take on just the 250 square feet. And then I guess we have to have a discussion of then what do we do at that point if we do not get somebody? And does this become Anthony's duty and we expand his, his role to be the barista? I, I don't know, but.
He does make a mean cup of coffee.
He does make a mean cup of coffee. Or maybe there's some other creative way that we can, you know, come up with the use of space issues. You know, to, to fill the 250 square feet. I do think that it is going to be an issue, especially in the present time. Who knows when COVID is going to come to a head?
Yeah.
So that all makes sense to me. One thing I'll point out, it's, it's, yes, it's 250 square feet internally, but we have outside tables and seating, you know, for, for a lot, actually, potentially. And that's a nice thing.
Yeah, and that's important. I agree with that. And, and, and by the way, that reminds me, I think, it, the, the requirements say that the vendor has to provide all of the equipment and, and seating. And, and I think the town is expecting to provide tables and chairs that are on the deck because they'll be used by more than just the cafe. And we, we should make that clear in the RFP.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I, I like the idea of casting the widest net and I defer is the best way to do that because I think a nice conversation to have would be if we got a not-for-profit and a, and a for-profit coming in and we could have a conversation about how we'd prioritize that. And that'd be a win-win. I would love to have that conversation, but I'm afraid, man, I have those options. So it's cast a wide net.
Right.
Why don't we, why don't you give staff another chance to take a stab at it based on the feedback this evening? And we can return it maybe in October.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, is that agreeable to everybody? Bill, did you want to make a comment or does that work?
No, I think that that's great. The only other comment that I had made was, you know, combine it with the catering by Dana contract, you know, and that, that may make some sense too. So I don't want to preclude that.
They're going away, but that may be possible.
Well, yeah, but their replacement will be here. So, okay.
You're going to have the catering by Dana conversation on October 7th.
Okay.
That should be able to maybe inform when we bring this back on the 21st.
All right, great, great. So I'm happy.
Okay, so we're moving on to item number 20, which is the direction of the million-dollar naming requests.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This one comes from a few meetings back. And since then, there had been some conversation with Atherton now via email. And the towns offered to the million-dollar donors and then their feedback in response to that you have as an attachment email. Staff's looking for direction to finalize a decision on the million-dollar donors, one way or the other. And then hopefully maybe some clarity on what their actual recognition would be.
Questions of clarification? No questions? Is there any public comment on this?
Don't have any, sir.
You don't see any?
None, none.
I don't see any. Okay, comments from the council?
Well, I'll jump in if everybody's going to be shy. My, so my sense of this is, is this has been going on for a very long time. And I think we really are, are not being as gracious as we could to people who have been quite generous. And I'd like to see us make a, a decision tonight and just move this on. We've, we've been talking about naming opportunities for other people for a while. These are the largest naming, you know, largest funders we have. And I'd like to make sure that we, we, you know, get this resolved. In terms of what the, George asked what the recognition is. I thought we had decided that. I thought it was a plaque that was going to go on a, on a wall or on a, a sign outside or something. And it was going to be, I thought we talked about eight and a half by 11, is that?
No, it's, yes, that's right. What, what the committee had recommended was for any $100,000 or greater done contribution, it'd be the size of a piece of paper. I think it's eight and a half by 11 or 12. And for those items that were less than that, and yet recognized, it'd be half that size. So this is obviously the size of a piece of paper.
Yeah, and that makes sense to me. And that also, it, I think that's appropriate. You know, it's not, it's not a huge name on top of a building or something. And so to that end, I'd like to move forward. And I, I think what I would do is, is probably go with what they've requested, which is, as I understand, the entry hall, the historic council chambers and the, the courtyard, the exterior courtyard, and find a good place to put a plaque of that size in each of those three places.
Bill?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I actually, I, I agree with Mike that this has been going on for a long time. We're going back and forth and things like that. And, and, you know, honestly, I'm to the point where I'd say, hey, we're going to have a donor wall. If you gave a million dollars, you get a tile this big. You gave a, you know, $200,000, you get a tile this big and be done with the plaques because there might be so many plaques eventually that the place looks like a graveyard. And so I really, you know, and we've gone back and forth, you know, we said, we don't want to have any plaques on the administration building, yet we've allowed somebody to pick a fountain. And we've decided, and he, with their input, that that fountain is going to be mounted on the side of the building. So they're going to have a plaque on the side of the building. And so, you know, somebody wanted to have a plaque saying that they participated in the, you know, made contributions that, that helped contribute towards, you know, establishment of a lobby or something like that. And you put that plaque on the outside of the building or off to the side where it's not, you know, a major thing. I just don't know where it is, you know, how, how that could be a problem. I do believe, and I, you know, Mike or, or Rick, you and I put that together. And yeah, we, we didn't have those items on the list. I just feel that we, this is just dragging on and on and on. And we have things out there at three and $5 million. And, and I don't see that there's a chance personally with, with any of those type of large sums coming in. So I think we, we need to try and settle this thing. I'd love to settle it easily tonight and, and, and get it off the table because I think it's, you know, a little bit embarrassing really where we are. But I do agree with you and I do agree with the fact that, you know, I worked with you on the list. We expanded the list together and the things that they're asking for, other than the courtyard, weren't necessarily on the list. But maybe we should just, you know, bite the bullet and do it.
Actually, I, I, I think both the courtyard and the historic council chambers were on the list. Each at $3 million. The only item that wasn't on the list was the lobby in the, in the new building because we had said that no area in the new building would be given. And we didn't offer that. We didn't offer anything in the building. But you're right, we're, we're putting a fountain on the outside ball. It's sort of over in the corner, but yes, that's, it's on that building.
And, and there's going to be a plaque that, right next to it.
That's true.
So, anyway, I, we, we were very clear on when we first talked about this is we said, we don't want to have something that's associated with the police. Because we thought that that, you know, could be a problem. And I think that, you know, also if you were, you know, a, a, a developer and you gave a couple hundred thousand dollars, you wouldn't want to have the place where you have design reviews with your name on it too, because perhaps the people working in planning might feel that maybe there'd be a little bit of pressure on them because they're working in your building or your, your thing. So I think we need to be a little bit careful, but, but, you know, due, due to the fact that we're not, for example, let's just take, let's, let's just take the courtyard. Due to the fact that we're not getting another $2 million from some. Due to the fact that we're not getting another two million dollars from somebody, what's the problem with giving it to somebody who gave a million dollars? I, you know, I just would like to get it done and have everybody have a good taste in the amount. That's, that's my comment.
Through the mayor if you want.
Yeah, please, carry.
Um, I'm just gonna go ahead and say and echo, uh, this has been exhausting and it's, it's been a, it's been a very long tedious process. And I think that, uh, with the assurance that we have that, uh, uh, we're comfortable with the plaques, like it'd be consistent with everybody else. You know, we're not gonna go extravagant. We're not naming a area. Um, the, 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 the historic council chambers is whoever's council chambers. I'm comfortable with Mike's recommendation and, um, I actually just would love to have this move forward.
Uh, well, yeah, my only problem with it is that we decided not to do the lobby and it, it, I mean, you, you, you are naming, putting something in the lobby, but I, hey, if all you guys think that's the right thing to do, I, I, we should just do it. Uh, I, I don't think that plaque should go on the outside of the building. It ought to be somewhere in the lobby that, I mean, there, there, I think the re, we, we did decide not to name either police or administration rooms. I think that was what was decided, right, George?
That and the council chambers.
And the council chambers. That's right. Anything in that building. So this is making an exception to that. And
Just on that, but my understanding is, at least I, I thought we had decided not to name anything where government functions were being performed. You know, where you were sitting and the city council chamber decisions were being made, or you were going to the police department or something like that. So that, I, I'm not sure it's an exception in that, in that regard.
The funny thing is, the guy that wants to, if I remember right, the person who wants the lobby was the one who came to our, our brunch meeting and said that the lobby cut the lobby out.
Yeah, no, he, he, he wanted to cut the lobby out. That's right. Exactly right.
So anyway, it just is a little comical.
It is. Okay, it, I mean, would, I mean, I guess we're gonna talk about the other naming requests. Is that, are we doing that, George?
No, that's at a future meeting, so that's not this evening. So it's just, uh, if, if it's the consensus of the council to move this forward in that way, who do you want to communicate that back to Atherton now? I mean, I can do it or could be another member of the council.
Uh, do you wanna? I apologize. Do you want that in a motion, George?
Sure.
Just so, I mean, I'm, I, I'm willing to move the motion consistent with what the town manager has mentioned to, and to finalize whatever the needs are through the town manager related to the plaque component.
And just for clarity, that's acceptance of the three naming requests as stated by Atherton now and the attached email to the staff report in the form of eight and a half by eleven plaques in their respective areas.
That's correct.
A place at the discretion of, of the, the council and, and staff, okay? So you can decide where you want the plaques, so they're not obtrusive.
I think the key thing is to put them where they're not obtrusive.
Yeah.
Those are all going in very public places.
Absolutely.
I'll second that.
Lee?
Hi.
Whitmer?
I, I say yes, so, so we can get done with this.
Lempres?
Hi.
Uh, Mayor DeGolia?
I'll say yes.
Okay, just note that, um, Vice Mayor Lewis had to exit the meeting.
Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is item twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This one is also a push forward from a prior meeting. At the July study session, there were, was conversation regarding the provisions of the policy manual and handbook or rule of procedure. Uh, attached into the staff report is the full handbook and rules of procedure. I highlighted in the staff report some of the key sections that were discussed at those prior meetings within the handbook. That was section three point four on subcommittees and section three point seven on the mayor. Within the rules of procedure, it was some duplicative sections, three point one on the mayor, section eight on committees, section eight point one on establishment of committees, eight point two on appointment of committees, uh, eight point three on ad hoc committees. And then, uh, section ten point seven was also touched on for representations of town and or city council policy. Uh, in the intervening period, uh, staff was also advised by some members of the council that they may wish to discuss uh, how agendas and agenda packets are created. Uh, and then within the rules of procedure, may oral proclamations and the duplicative four point one agenda preparation. So staff's recommending the council have a, a discussion around these items. And if there's recommendations for change, you articulate those this evening. Uh, and then we'll bring it back at a future meeting for adoption. That concludes the staff report.
Are there questions of clarification? Okay, so none. Is there any public comment on this item?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Uh, co, I'll bring it back to the council. Comments from the council?
I'm, I'm happy to kick off again. Um, and I think, so from, from my perspective, I, what I had hoped to get out of this is, is a sort of a conversation about what we expect the roles of the different, uh, you know, of the mayor and, and vice mayor and council members to be. And make sure that we're all on the same page with it, because I feel like there's been a misunderstanding or a, a disagreement about that. Uh, on certain issues. And my sort of basic assumption is that the, the, the mayor is, is really a, a council member first and foremost, who does chair our council sessions. Um, and should be, um, you know, representing the council uh, in, in the performance of his duties in terms of appointments of subcommittees and things like that, um, the, the outcome of the council votes. Um, and I'm not sure that that's as it is, it's put, one of the, I'm sorry, one of the other things that has come up in the past, I think is a good idea that's not in these rules. It is the idea that, um, three, three council members or majority of the council should be able to take certain actions. Um, and, and that, we can't remember where that came up. We were talking about the appeal of something that, that the mayor had done and, and we're just told there's no appeal. And that feels uh, feels unnecessary to me. It feels like we ought to have a process where, you know, majority of the council is really who runs the council. Um, anyway, that's sort of my general take on, on these issues, but happy to have that conversation.
Other comments? Bill?
Yeah, um, I, I believe that there should be, of course, I, I think there already is, but okay, I've been overruled, but I do, I think that there needs to be some sort of an appeal process, as Mike pointed out. The purpose of this is this. Let's say there is a situation where there was a split council vote, three to two, and the mayor chose to appoint a subcommittee to go work it and then appoints two members from the dissenting side. That could happen. I'm not saying it is, but I'm saying it could happen. Thereby, the council should be able to appeal that decision or, or, or appeal any, you know, appointments. I think that that's, that's kind of important. If I was rewriting all of our procedures, I would also say, because we have term limits for our committee members, I think we should have term limits for our council members as well. And I hope that one day we can bring that forward to have a legitimate conversation on that. Especially since some people ran on asking for term limits and, and they forgot. So I do believe that, uh, an appeal thing is about all I really want to, I'd like to be able to find a way to get something in there because, you know, we're supposed to be a team. And when we make a decision, I remember when we met with Nancy Herrick the first time, it was, you know, we all agreed. We make a decision, the council make the decision, we're going down this road or that road. That's the way we're gonna go and you may not agree with it, but at the same time, that's what you have to support and you have to say the council has decided to move this way. You could say, you know, there's always dissenting opinions, but I'm part of the council and I'm, I'm moving that way. And I just feel that that's, you know, we just need to try and get back to, to that process. And I think that it's, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's important. I think that we've had, we've had a very good uh, relationship over the last ten years, really. You know, I think this council works very, very well together. But, you know, there, we just want to make sure that we, you know, there, there should be something, if, if there's a hole in the process, I think it's, the appeal process should be written in. Thanks.
Uh, through the mayor.
Yeah, please, carry.
Um, you know, I think that anything that, uh, we as a group could do to make things smoother and, you know, frankly, if it's making the language cleaner to make it very clear to everybody uh, in general, uh, because the mayor's role is a big role, a council member's role is a big role, but they're all equal roles. And, um, you know, i- if there's been confusion and we can tidy this up and, you know, uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Whitmer had mentioned, if we are going to have a discussion related to term limits, that we include the public and get a general feeling what the public says because, you know, we do work for the public and at a very expensive rate. And, um, that zero, but, um, but doing that, you know, we do it for the purposes of serving them. And, um, the reality is, you know, we don't do justice if we are confused about how our operations component or our handbook is, you know, maybe in areas that we could clean up to make it clear, because if we can't understand it, I don't think the general public can be expected to understand what it looks like. So, um, this might not be something that we can solve this evening, but I do think it's something that we um, should put our heads together and figure out how we can clean it up and, um, uh, make it a better operational guide, um, you know, for everybody.
Um, if I may offer just one comment, um, I believe this issue first came up when there was a discussion of the mayor potentially disbanding an ad hoc committee. And the council policies in the handbook provide under section three point four and other sections that the mayor is responsible and is authorized to not only form uh, standing committees with consensus of the council as a whole or ad hoc committees on his own accord. And the reason why the mayor, I presume, was authorized to form ad hoc committees unilaterally is because that's the only way that an ad hoc committee could be formed without requiring notice and agenda pursuant to the Brown Act. Anytime there's formal action by a majority of the council, the body is considered a standing committee subject to the Brown Act. So one of the questions that was just raised by Councilmember Lempres and Whitmer was a way to, and also, um, Lee was to provide some clarity. So what we can do is we can, or, or instead of clarity, an opportunity for an appeal. Um, so one thing for the council's consideration is the continuation of the mayor to be able to appoint ad hoc committees. However, add the ability of the council as a whole to form standing committees without necessarily having to have the mayor first introduce that.
How does that work?
That.
So right now, under three point four, it says the mayor may create and appoint members to standing committees of the city council with the approval of the council. Um, so it has to be the mayor who brings this up as a request. But what we can do is we can have any member of the council request the formation of a standing committee, which will then necessitate the approval by a majority to form it.
What about the, if, if the appointment is, is by three to two vote and the two people that dissented, as I pointed out, are on the committee, that doesn't seem right. Then you might as well not get the appointments. Cause, uh, uh, the two dissenters already said that they weren't interested in it. And so obviously their diligence in, in working it would be at the same level. Not interested.
Well, if, if, if there was only two dissenters, well, if there were three dissenters, that's a majority of the council. If there's two dissenters, in order to put those two dissenters on the subcommittee as the committee, it needs the majority of the council's approval.
Not an ad hoc committee. No, the, the mayor could create, I, I, Mike, uh, Bill's concern, which I think is a theoretical concern because I think it's irresponsible for somebody to do that. But, uh, his concern is that there's a three to two vote and that there's, uh, that, that there's some action needed by an ad hoc committee to pull some issues together and that the mayor would appoint the two dissenters to be that ad hoc committee. And Mona's resolution to addressing that is, well, a majority of the council could overturn that, which I think the cer, current uh, rules and procedures allow a majority of the council to overturn that. But it ends up creating a standing committee by action of a majority of the council.
Right.
Uh, and it takes a couple.
We have a language in the, in this handbook that says, I mean, the way I interpret is, it says that, that would be an improper thing to do because there's certain courteous behavior and, uh, uh, work for consensus and, you know, uh, a, a, um, sensitivity to the rest of the council that's in, that's included in these several different attachments. Now, that's not to say that legally, somebody might not do that, but that hasn't happened.
What, what would happen if we, um, just required that ad hoc committees can, to contain at least one person who's in the majority decision of the council on a specific, on these issue, on issue, relevant issue or something?
I would think it has to be both.
It's not always practical for it to be both. You might have two people. If you have a three to two vote, it might be more practical for two people who are both in the majority to be on it, but you could probably provide that if, I mean, can you do that, Mona?
The council cannot influence the mayor's deci, or the, the mayor's decision as to who to appoint or take action on it. I suppose we can have a general rule that, now, I don't want to have any kind of formal rule in the policy or handbook as to the formation of the ad hoc because it would turn it into a standing committee subject to the Brown Act and the whole purpose.
Oh, I'm sorry, would that, I'm sorry, but would that happen only if that was violated or it happened for everyone? Would be a Brown Act can, committee if, if indeed it was, it was what I'll call properly constituted?
Correct, yes.
It would still be, even if, okay.
Any type of action or, uh, any type of action by a majority of the council would convert an ad hoc committee into a standing committee. And again, the purpose behind it is that the ad hoc committee would not have the flexibility to meet on an as-needed basis, on a whim as necessary. We'd have to notice it, post an agenda and so forth.
So, so could, could you say if we have a uh, decision of the council to say we will ask the mayor to appoint a ad hoc committee to go address this? Could there be additional words to say? And, and, uh, uh, it should be of supporting members of the resolution?
Well, I, 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 I think as an example, there was a specific ad hoc committee created for the Bayfront Canal uh, conversation. I think that was, uh, the mayor and yourself.
Right.
Part of the analysis of the mayor in appointing you was you had a somewhat difference of perspective and opinion on the Bayfront Canal outcome and issues. So it helped to have two opposing viewpoints.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we can, what?
I, I thought, I thought there should be some clarity, that's all.
We could provide it as much as, is. We could provide it as much as, is reasonable or possible, we could include. Uh, a, a divergence of viewpoints on ad hoc committees.
So, I mean, uh, something perhaps as simple as the mayor shall strive to provide a balanced ad hoc subcommittee whenever one is appointed.
That's reasonable.
That's easy.
No, I, I, I actually think, I'd like to see a little more teeth. I mean, I agree with that, but I also like the idea of the council. Can convert it to a standing committee that's.
Sure, I think it can. I, I think it can right now.
That's correct.
Last time we looked at it, we were told it, it takes a couple of months, is that right? You gotta, we gotta post it, there's a process of some sort? There's no way to short circuit that?
No, we would just need to agendize it on a council meeting so that the public knows that this is right.
Okay. That's a better approach.
Well, they're not inconsistent. I don't mean to say they're, they're inconsistent, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there any particular action that anyone's encouraging here?
I, I, do we need, uh, something a little more formal? I guess we've targeted that area. Uh, section three point four, Mona, the area that you had indicated, can we have some language drawn up that we could all? You know, read and understand, or do we need to do, can we do that right now?
Any changes to this has to come back to you for adoption.
Yeah, let's not, let's not wordsmith something now.
Yeah, is, is there language, is there language in here that says? Yeah, sorry. Is there language in here that says that the mayor's, you know, represents the, the, the final decision of the council? Whether he or she agrees with that final decision or not? I thought there was, but I'm reading it and I don't see it.
Well, that's what we agreed with Nancy Hendrick, I pointed out, that everyone, we, we get a vote, whether it's a split decision or not. And we all represent to the public. This was the decision of the council and we all support the decision of the council.
But I don't see that in these rules, and I actually think something like that would be nice to have in the rules.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. Yeah, it was, it was made in a, in a kumbaya session.
Um, there is a section on page nine of the city council rules of procedure under ten point seven. Perhaps it can go there, but it says.
It, it, it's of seventy-four.
Twenty-eight of seventy-four. If you look at section ten point seven. It states council members shall not represent themselves as speaking on behalf of the town. And/or the city council without prior approval of the city council. Statements of previously approved city council policy may be reiterated or recalled without additional city council approval. And then do you wish to add a sentence there that also states that, um? The position of the city is essentially whatever the majority has agreed upon.
I think, I think this is, this is a little different than, than, than what I think we're talking about. You know, this is where somebody, you know, wants to push something, say with a, with a, with a state assemblyman. And you, you know, you're signing it as council member to get a little more emphasis on it. Or you want something else done, and so you sign it, you know, as council member or mayor. As, and it hadn't been approved by the council. That's, we're saying, it's the same thing with, with, uh, committee members, you know? We don't want to have committee members representing that they've got approval from the committee, and that's the position of the town. They make a recommendation, they get approval from their committee, they make a recommendation to the council. The council then decides what to do with regards to oppositions. That's what, that's how I read that, representing of the town and the council. Okay, that's, that's something that we voted on and you don't have a maverick going out and doing their own thing. Or a committee member going out and doing their own thing. So, you want to use that, then we're gonna need to strengthen it.
Mi- Mike, is that the concern that you have?
I, I just, and I, I don't want, I'm not pointing this at Rick, so I don't want to, I don't want to make it seem like I am, so, uh, uh, please don't take it that way. I just think that somewhere in here, and I was thinking maybe it goes earlier on, where you talk about the duties of the mayor in the, the. Handbook first section, whatever that is. But somewhere where, if, if the mayor's on the losing side of a vote, I think his obligation is still to push that. Whatever that issue is through, or to step aside and let the vice mayor push that through.
Well, what do you mean push it through?
I mean, implement it. A- and not, I mean, implement it, you know, with, with integrity and support it. Even though the, the mayor might think it's a wrong thing to do. Right? The council's reached a decision, three to two, or four to one, or whatever, a- and the mayor's on the losing side of that. I think the mayor has an obligation to treat that final decision as a final decision, then as part of his job or her job to actually implement that decision. Do whatever that takes, appoint a subcommittee that's, you know, gonna get it done, or whatever it is.
Yeah, and frankly, the mayor doesn't have the authority to do any implementation, uh, other than appoint a subcommittee, that's true. Uh, where, where that may be appropriate, where, you know, we need some action that's done, and we want an ad hoc committee to do that. Uh, and, and I agree with you that, uh, that should be done. I think that's a different, and, and that goes to Bill's earlier point of, you know, i- if the mayor were to appoint. Two dissenting members in a three to two vote, whose obligation is to implement the decision of the majority. That would not feel very good to the majority, and there'd be a lot of opposition to that. But, the mayor doesn't have any authority to implement anything, frankly.
Well, then maybe what we do is, is get a statement, general statement that says all council members, including the mayor. Um, you know, shall work to effectively, uh, support the final decisions of, of the council.
Well, but that's a pretty hard thing. If, if you disagree with something that a majority decides. Uh, we shouldn't have a rule that says you have to change your position. Uh, we should have a rule that says you represent what the council's position is. And you implement that or you, uh, you know, move that forward with integrity, I totally agree with that. But you should, we, we shouldn't be cha- uh, forcing people to change their positions.
No one, no one's.
They're not in the majority.
No one's suggesting that.
Well, ten, seven, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a, maybe a sentence you could add there. When representing the town's position, when representing the town as an official member of the council. Uh, it's the obligation of a council member to present the council's policy or something like that.
Related council decisions.
Yeah.
Or appropriate or associated council decisions.
That works.
You're, you're entitled to a dissenting opinion, you're entitled to your own perspective on things. The, the, I think the problem that happens is when you go out and say, you know, the city council decided X, Y, and Z with respect to this issue. But I think this, uh, and, and you're entitled to do that, you have the right to do that.
Yeah. I mean, I'll give you an example where this has come up for me, and it's come up for me a lot. Because, uh, Peninsula Clean Energy, where I'm the vice chair, and so I, I go to three meetings a week. With Peninsula Clean Energy. And, uh, and a, a big, uh, issue that they pushed over the last year were reach codes. And about half the cities in San Mateo County implemented some form of reach codes. And we decided not to consider, not, not, not to look at them, not, not to just not implement them, not even look at it. And I've been asked that thirty times by people, uh, that are either. You know, related to Peninsula Clean Energy in one way or another, and every time I've, I've taken the position. That Atherton decided not to, uh, do that for the reasons that were articulated in that decision. I wasn't at that council meeting, but, um, uh, I, I had not, you know, so I've. I mean, that's an example for me of exactly what you're talking about. Where I've been faced with a fairly personally challenging issue, but, because I've helped put the policy together at Peninsula Clean Energy. Um, being on their board, uh, and we decided not to look at that issue. Uh, and, you know, the, I mean, there, there was a perfectly rational reason why we decided not to look at that issue. And I've, I, I, I have represented that every time I've been asked. But I wouldn't take the position that if I were voting on that, that's the position I would vote for. I think that would be.
I mean, that to me is an obvious thing, that's what you do, that's, that's, that's what our obligations are.
Um, yeah, I think.
And maybe there's nothing we can do about, I will say that I was uncomfortable with the, the fire district subcommittee conversation. It felt like something was broken in that process. And I, I don't, I don't feel like majority of the council was able to effectively advocate their position there. And, and that's what, that's what prompted this, because what came up is people said, well, you know, you got the ability to create a standing committee, and that's all you can really do. So that was an example where I don't think it went smoothly.
Well, it didn't go smoothly, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Uh, but frankly, there, there was nothing to be done. I mean, that's why I disbanded the committee, there was nothing to be done. Nobody wanted me, we didn't want to meet, they didn't want to meet.
Yeah, but there were meetings going on, that was.
No, they had gone on, they, they were done, there weren't any meetings.
No, I mean, separate meetings between council members and members of the fire board, fire district. And, and that creates challenges.
Okay, but, but, I mean, that, that's good, uh, that, that can always happen. And for, for, I mean, I'm sure members of the fire board have reached out to you, and you're not on that subcommittee.
I, I think it's a Brown Act violation for me to talk about negotiating a resolution of something. Where there's a subcommittee engaged with the fire district on it.
And that's what Mona said.
Well. If, I didn't negotiate any, uh, attempted settlement on the fire district. I, I, I never tried to do that. I did meet with members of the fire board. I was called by, not all of them, but I was called by a number of them.
Perhaps.
Sure you were too.
Perhaps we can add language, uh, that says something along the lines of when an ad hoc or standing committee has been formed. Council members who are not a member of the committee shall not engage in discussions related to the jurisdiction of the committee. Unless and until presented to the council.
I think that's helpful because we run that risk of a Brown Act violation. And I think that gives everybody a little bit more clarity on how we should be operating.
I think that's a, a, a good one, uh, and with respect to, uh, ten point seven and representations. A sentence such as, when representing the council or the town on respective issues. Members of the council are first and foremost expected to represent their respective policy decisions of the council. Okay. If that makes sense.
It makes sense to me, and I'll chime in since, since I think it's best.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, my, my own.
I'm telling you, when, when somebody's on a, on the minority on that, you're gonna have a huge problem with it. But I, I'm, I'm happy to go with it.
I, I think it doesn't, from your personal perspective, but your first perspective is. The council voted in this particular way, and here's why. I'm a dissenting member, and this is my perspective.
Well, that's different than what has been asked for.
Well, I don't, I don't think that we can stifle somebody's personal opinion. We just don't want that put forward as, uh, hey, you know what? Those guys, you know, blah, 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 but, you know, I wouldn't have voted that way, I didn't vote that way. I didn't want to see that, you know, that maybe even fan the flames of maybe, maybe we can push for some, to overturn it. I mean, that's, that's the thing. And, and I do believe that, you know, if, if there's a subcommittee or whatever. And somebody tries to go around the subcommittee. Then, then that person who's being approached to be going around should be a point, pushing those people back to the subcommittee. We've got a subcommittee to go discuss that. And, um, you know, whether, whether it was intentional or not, but the, there are. Certain board members of the fire district that are running around saying that they've come up with a list of things that, that. People who weren't on the subcommittee have discussed with them. And, you know, and, and saying how they want to negotiate all this. Well, you know, of course, when we gave them the list and we spent a lot of time going over it, then they decided that they didn't want to talk to us about it. Like, they were very clear that they didn't want to talk to us about it, so. You know, now I'm hearing from board members are saying that they would like to actually sit down and discuss it. And that they've had conversations with certain council members, uh, with a list of things. And so, you know, I just say, well, you know what? You know, you need to bring it to somebody who's on that committee, or send us a letter or something, you know? Um, we're not, you know, it's unaware that you guys have changed your position. So, anyway, that's, that's all, you know, I just, we need to be a team, that's all. And I, and I want to make sure that we, I know we had a little bit of discourse and I. Um, I didn't, you know, I was part of it, and I didn't mean to hurt anybody's feelings or cast any. Ill will on anybody, but, uh, I just hope that we can be a team. Because I think that we've been doing great the last couple of years. I can remember my early years on the council. And there was some very strong arguments between two council members. And I was in the middle of it, you know, as the mayor that one time, and it was, you know, not a very comfortable feeling. Having these two council members going back and forth at one another. So I do think that, you know, we, we've come a long way since then, and I just want to make sure that we. Get, stay where we are, okay? And so, and I appreciate everybody. Personally, I appreciate everybody working with me and, and hopefully, you know, they enjoy working with me as well. But, uh, anyway, I appreciate it, thank you. That's all I've got to say about it.
I, I agree with all that, and I think we've, we've had, you know, I, I've got nothing to add, I think we're in good shape.
I agree.
Would you like us to bring back those minor modifications?
George, that would be great if the mayor's okay with it.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you pull it together and we can discuss it?
Will do. I, and we'll also bring back that correction that, uh, you and I talked about, Rick, about the, um. Park and Rec Committee.
Oh, yeah, there's, well, there, there's, there's a few little. Corrections that need to be made in here, just so everybody else knows, there, there's a reference in here to the Park and Rec Commission there, there. Which is no longer a commission.
Right.
And I, and I thought that there was also something from staff about reducing the number of people on the rail committee.
Yeah, that'll, that'll come to you on October seventh.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Okay, let's move on to item twenty-two. Item twenty-two is the Town Center Project Update.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the council, hopefully you can all hear me pretty good. Um, yeah, this is your, your monthly update on the Town Center Project. As the mayor knows, because he was out there Monday with some folks from the Friends of the Library touring the site. Uh, there's a lot of activity going on out there, and it's a lot of, a lot of things happening very quickly, very good, in a good direction. And yesterday, uh, the police chief was out there with some of his staff touring, uh, the city hall, police building. I think they're very excited and looking forward to the future when they can start moving into there, which is again, gonna be around July one of next year. Uh, and then I'm gonna get into that a little bit more detail in some of the other areas of this report. Uh, I'm not gonna go through all the, uh, items in the report. You can certainly read all the things that are happening each week, the major milestones of the project. Uh, but I'd encourage you, if at all possible, to come out and tour the site. Uh, while we were on this council meeting, I just booked another tour for next week. Uh, so be happy to tour, have anybody come out there and look at things as, as they're progressing. Uh, today we have three items that we would need council action on. And I'm going to go with the first one, which is authorize the city attorney to prepare and the city manager to execute an agreement amendment with WRS Studio for additional construction administration funding in the amount of 367,900. In some background on that, as, is, is that in your staff report? Let me see on page, I think it's six. Uh, when WRS bid on this project and was aware of this project in March of 2015, uh, the, the response to the LP that they, they responded to had a construction period of around 80 weeks. Uh, that's why, and actually Pauline Susan's on the line too. She can. So when they originally bid the construction administration budget, which was a 519,000, that was based on an 80-week construction period. And now we're looking at, uh, in, in the next item, which I'm agenda is going to move the, uh, the project schedule date from June 30th, 2021 to October 29th, 2021. Uh, due to COVID and some other reasons, we're writing some fabrication and just other areas and just a complexity of the project overall. Uh, so WRS is requesting per the attachment, one, July 9th letter to the city manager for additional funding to complete, uh, their support of the construction administration. Because of the 44 extra weeks that the construction period is taking, they originally bid on this. And based on some information based on industry standards that MAP 5 compiled for us, uh, this is certainly in line with industry standards. They said the construction administration budget is usually about 20 to 30% of the overall fee for the Zen fee for the architect. And currently the fee for WRS is 5.5 million. And if you take the range between 20 and 30%, that would give you a construction administration budget of 1.1 to 1.6 million. So again, they're asking for 367,900 to complete the project to continue support uh, for the construction administration. Currently, the budget is currently expended. They, they don't have any more money in their construction administration budget. So this will get them through the duration of the, the end of the project. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, Pauline Susan's on the line too, to respond to any questions the council might have.
Uh, okay. Thank you, Marty. Is there any questions, clarification? Uh, seeing none. Is there any public comment?
I have no hands. Just for any of the remaining people on the call, if you'd like to make a public comment, you can use the participants button, send a chat message, raise your hand with that participants button, or if you're calling in, you can dial star nine on your phone.
Okay. Comments from the council?
I prefer not to pay the money.
Go ahead, Kerry.
Yeah. Oh, I agree with you. I prefer not to pay the money. Um, but I want to thank Marty because I, uh, was out there and I saw the locations, um, uh, where the fountains were going to go. So, um, I'm pretty comfortable. I, I don't like, but I and that there, there, there was some obstacles, um, with Amoroso and, um, that during the COVID component. So, um, completely understandable and, and we needed to take a proper response for public safety to make sure we ironed out some things in the midst of the early ages of the convert, current component. And I think they've done an excellent job. But there is a price for being safe and, um, that's, this is one of them.
Bill, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I was, you know, I did speak to, to the city manager and, you know, he explained, you know, why this was a justified number. My question was, you know, there was some periods of time that, that things were shut down. So WRNS probably didn't have as much work, but, uh, you know, he explained that they were busy during the COVID. So, um, it's unavoidable. Um, it's unfortunate because it's another 367,000, 368,000. And, you know, we're kind of at the end of the limits here. So, but, uh, I was told that this, we had to do it and it was industry standard. I don't care about what the industry averages are, Marty. That's fine. The bottom line is we've got a certain budget we're trying to keep to. So, um, so anyway, but I understand the reason for it. And so you will have my support.
Okay. Mike, do you have a comment?
Nothing really substantive to add. It, it, um, I, I will note, Marty, I, as you know, I look to you to make sure that we stay on time and on budget.
Correct.
And, and we discussed that last meeting.
Well, I, I can tell you the budget is, is doing very good and, you know, a lot of ground, uh, George can certainly chime in on that. Uh, just to give you some perspective, the contingency budget that we had for the project was 4.7 million. And to date, we have, if, if council approves both these items today, we'll have about 3.9 million in, in contingency left. So the budget is very good. We're in very good shape budget wise. And again, as far as moving people in, we're going to be moving them in based on the original schedule, like July 1st of next year's with City Hall PD. And then about two or three weeks later, the library is going to be moving in. But as far as all the finishing touches and all the punchless items, that's going to be done by October 29th, if not sooner. And again, Jennifer Erskine from, uh, Amoroso's on the line too. But that's the current schedule we have and we're going to keep to it.
Thank you. To the mayor.
Yes.
The one thing we need to invest in is, uh, a new microphone for Marty because I feel like I'm in a bubble.
Yeah, you're a meter.
Marty, uh, you're getting a lot of reverb.
Yeah, that's what people are texting me. I don't know how to stop that or change that. I'm sorry. I have to try something else.
Okay, Marty, I also couldn't fully hear you. Did, did you address the issue of the settlement or were you just addressing the, uh, construction administration funding?
Yeah, just the construction administration mayor. And I'd like to take one at a time and have the action, uh, the council take action.
Okay. Can I get a motion on the first item?
Sure. I'd like to move that, uh, we authorize the city attorney and the city manager to move forward with an amendment to the WRNS, uh, contract, uh, to add the additional construction administration funding to the amount of 367,900.
I'll second that. Hey.
Whitmer?
Yes, of course. I just made the motion.
I understand. Weest?
Aye. Aye with a microphone.
Thank you. Lemprous?
Aye.
Here to Goya?
Yes.
And again, we're just going to note that Vice Mayor Lewis is absent.
Okay. And Marty, why don't you go on to the next item?
Yeah, the next item, Mayor, is a settlement agreement for, uh, change proposal estimate number 13 for steel fabrication delay. And then CPE number 51, which was due to the COVID-19 delay. Uh, we've been working and negotiating with Amoroso Royce since the first of the year on the steel fabrication. And of course, then in March, uh, I think it was the 13th or so, we had the COVID shutdown. Uh, and based on all that, in all our negotiations, uh, we've come up with a term sheet, which is part of your staff report is attachment three. Uh, and it was really the city manager and myself negotiating with, uh, the president of Amoroso and also the project manager, Jennifer. And everything was reviewed, any kind of legal things went through, uh, the city attorney, of course. And so what you have in front of you is really the term sheet. And what we're recommending today is that you authorize the city attorney to prepare in the city manager to execute a settlement agreement, SJ Amoroso, the construction company, um, to put together a final settlement agreement that has all the legal language that's necessary. But the term sheet, which has the nine bullet points, those are the main, uh, business points that as staff level, we have agreed to. But of course, it takes city council, uh, approval to make this happen. And some of the things, uh, you're going to see in there is that for CPE 13, uh, we negotiated that, um, we would provide them with 16 compensable workdays at $7,000 per day for a total of 112,000. And as you noticed in the staff report, that was a lot more than currently in the beginning when Amoroso was asking for quite a bit more than that. Uh, CPE 51 were, uh, we agreed to, again, staff level 35 compensable workdays at 7,000 per workday for a total of 245,000. And so together between those CP 13 and 51, it would be 357,000 dollars, uh, that we would compensate Amoroso for the delays, uh, in the steel fabrication and also the COVID delays. And then your staff report, it breaks it down by how much the library fund would pay out of that and then the city hall fund. The other thing that, uh, as of note, that is in your term sheet, as I've mentioned already, is that the construction schedule would change and only council can change this from June 30th, 2021 to October 29th, 2021. But again, as I mentioned before, we're, we clearly anticipate to move, start moving staff in by July 1 into City Hall and the police side. And then, uh, the library a few weeks later. And then the, the following months will be doing cleanup and extending, uh, Asheville Road, getting, uh, removing the, the old police, uh, office building over there and doing things that that area, that corner over there would take us sometime in September, October. Uh, so with that, I'd like to answer any questions. And again, Jennifer Erskine from Amoroso's on the line also.
Great. Does anyone have any questions?
I, I do. Marty, if we, um, approve all this, does that resolve all outstanding disputes with Amoroso? Or is there more?
Well, there's, there's more issues, but nothing that like this level, this major. These are the big ones.
Okay.
Any other questions, clarification? No. Okay. Are there any public comments on the side?
I have none and I see no hands raised or.
Okay. Comments from the council? Bill?
Yeah. So, um, I know the number could have been substantially larger. So Marty, uh, you and George, thank you very much for, um, you know, coming up with, I think, an equitable settlement for Amoroso, but also, you know, watching out for our budget. So I, I do appreciate the efforts you've put in. I know you've been working on it for, uh, over a month. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I appreciate that.
Through the mayor?
Yes, please, Kerry.
I, I also want to thank the, the entire team, including the Amoroso team, because it takes two parties to come together to come up with what you guys have come up with. And, uh, it's refreshing. And, uh, let's continue, but with less of these, please.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Marty, let me, let me second that and then just say I do appreciate the work that both Amoroso and you did, you know, getting this resolved. I, I will note that it looks, a, a four-month delay is a long delay. So I'm hoping we don't see any, any more delays.
Yeah. Uh, there should not be any more, council member, unless something unexpected that we have no idea is going to happen. But right now everything's on track. Everything's going very smoothly. And I'd welcome you to come to, uh, take a tour because you're going to see so much action going on and it's moving very quickly.
Great. I second all the comments from the, my colleagues. Uh, I, I think it's a good settlement, very equitable. I'm glad to see it put behind us and I'm sure Amoroso feels that way. So, um, good work.
Thank you.
Do, do you need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion.
I'm, I'm happy to move it.
Great.
And I'll second it.
Okay, great.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Weest?
Aye.
Lemprous?
Aye.
Here to Goya?
Aye.
Again, Vice Mayor Lewis is absent.
Right. Okay, that finishes item 22.
And there's one more item there on that, one more issue. And that is regarding the fountain design and options in next steps.
Okay.
As you know, you're on the ad hoc committee with the vice mayor.
Right.
We had two, uh, people from the project management committee, Rose Howe and Steve Doggsart, as well as myself and the city manager on a Zoom call on July 21st. And those per direction from council on the July 15th meeting. And based on that Zoom meeting that we had with the, the two, the council member and mayor was that there's three items that came from a recommendation from this group is that a library fountain as be, as depicted in the concept drawing below, uh, stay there in, in the future, be, be installed. And then in Sea Hall on the left exterior wall, um, really outside of this, the dispatch northeast corner, as you are facing the building on Fair Oaks, a wall-mounted fountain or water feature be there at some point in the future. And then at this point, um, have staff, direct staff to work with Amoroso to put together, put the needed plumbing and electrical near the future fountain for the library one out there as close as possible. So to reduce costs ultimately, and, uh, when the fountain does happen out there. Because the one on the face of the building, there won't be no issues with that. It's just the one over there by the library is what we want to get it plumbed as close as possible. So you don't have to dig up things in the future. So we need some direction, uh, on that, Mayor.
Uh, great. Okay. Do I have any, are there any questions of clarification from the council? Is there any public comment on this?
None.
No. Okay. Let's bring it back to the council for discussion. Comments?
Uh, just my comment that, uh, I think, uh, I, Marty, I, I reiterate that I went out there and saw it. I think that the locations are good. And I think that the infrastructure to come into play is something important to, um, pick out or get done. Um, so that these can be done without having to tear up stuff to put them in at some later time.
Yeah, that, that's important. That, that's really the reason that it's coming. Well, there, there was the naming issue uh, where there, uh, two donors wanted to name these water features, but, uh, they require water, uh, electricity and, uh, some drainage. So, uh, it's important to get them done now and not have it be a, uh, you know, some kind of an adjustment later.
Makes sense. Any other? I'm, uh, more than willing to make a motion to approve the preliminary future foundation design and options and locations.
Great.
Second.
Weest?
Aye.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Lemprous?
Aye.
Goya?
Yeah.
The last vote, uh, I think we're done.
I, can I get one question to Marty and, and Amoroso maybe?
Yes.
Uh, did you get us a status report on the Civic Center? Marty, I walked by those Rand Earth walls and I can see the cracks from a distance and they make me uncomfortable. Can you give me some, some comfort about them? Are they coming as, as expected? Are those cracks normal and to be expected?
Well, it, the, the cracks based on Ramoth, the company in Napa that builds these things, that, that is fairly, those are hairline cracks. We don't see them expanding at all. We, all of steel is going up on the library and they're not getting any bigger or anything. Uh, there's going to be a ceiling put on the Rand Earth, all, all the walls in the next, in the coming weeks. And there's going to be some patching also going on. So I think there's going to, the walls will be a little bit better looking in probably a month or two, once they do a little touch-up work in the ceiling.
But you're comfortable that structurally they're sound and, and.
Structurally, no issue because they're, they're just really a facade at this point. Uh, the structural component is a six-inch concrete wall in, inside that you don't see, but that's a structural component.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so the, the last item is council reports comments. Does anybody have a reported comment? Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, so on the county call today, Atherton is one of the laggards in the census. So it'd be good perhaps if we do an email blast, uh, directing people how to do the census or that it's important that they do do the census and participate in it. Um, our participation is down in the bottom third. We're like 74% of our people have done it. And it comes up in almost every county meeting that I go to that Atherton is lagging. And the city, the county manager likes to bring up that Atherton, you know, there's other ones below us, but he's always mentioning Atherton. the city, the county manager likes to bring up that Atherton, you know, there's other ones below us, but he's always mentioning Atherton. So, um, also, you know, there's a big push on growing our testing. And so, you know, people can go get tested again and again, if they'd like. Uh, the more that we test above the, the state limit, the more benefit we have so that we can get to the red level so that we can start reopening some things. And so, uh, I just want to bring those two items up.
Okay. Anybody else? Uh, I, I have one, which is we've been, we've received a communication from Joe Semidion, uh, uh, about, uh, wanting to set up a multi-jurisdictional meeting, uh, rela- uh, related to Stanford development. Uh, he wants to update us on what Santa Clara County is, has been working on and to solicit input from San Mateo County. So I'm going to set up an ad hoc committee. We don't currently have one, uh, to do that. And if anybody would be interested in serving on that, please let me know. Uh, I know we had one last year, but we, uh, don't concurrently. Mike, uh, you were on it last year.
Yeah, I'm happy to. I'm, I'm, it's one of those things I'm happy to do. Not, you know, if, if it's helpful, I'm happy to do it. If somebody else wants to do it, I'm happy to have them do it.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll set it up and we'll let you know.
Terrific.
Okay. Uh, I think that's it. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.